Good evening, welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, September 15th, 2020 at 5:32 PM. John, would you please provide us with the introduction?
Yes, hello and welcome. My name is John McNally and I'll be providing assistance to the mayor and the elected officials during today's meeting. Before we start, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items so the public audience knows how to participate. Your microphones have been muted to reduce background noise during this public meeting. There will be specific times during this meeting when members of the public can ask questions and provide feedback. The first way is by typing their question into the questions section at the bottom of the GoToWebinar interface. Those items will be read into the record by a meeting organizer at the appropriate time. Please be sure to include your name for the record. The second way is by using the GoToWebinar interface and clicking on the "Raise Hand" option. A meeting organizer will announce the speaker and unmute their audio, at which time the speaker should state their name for the record. Before speaking, please take steps to minimize any sources of background noise and speak clearly into your device during the allotted time. I will now turn control over to Mayor Stephen Grant, who will be presiding over today's meeting.
Thank you so much, John. First, we'll start off by a invocation from Pastor Bob Bender of Christ Fellowship Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Ty Pennsurgah.
Well, God, we thank you so much for the City of Boynton. We thank you for your goodness. We thank you for your mercy. And, God, we pray that you would give wisdom and discernment for the men and women who are leading this great city, and pray that you would continue to be able to foster unity. As there are many different challenges, many different things come before us as a community, we pray that you would give us the wisdom and the ability to know what to do, how to do, and more than anything, be able to do it with love at every step of the way. Thank you, God, for the gifts that we have of life and everything else. We pray your blessing on our city and on our commissioners and on everything that we do in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Bob.
All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Present.
Vice Mayor Ty Pennsurgah.
Here.
Commissioner Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Woodrow L. Hay.
I log on difficulties in my office, so he'll be on in a minute.
Okay. And Commissioner Christina L. Romulus.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you so much. Moving on to agenda approval additions, deletions, or corrections. I believe I still have $200 of community support funds and I received a letter from 211. And I'd like the commission to see if we can put that item under 5B to give them their, the remainder of my city, uh, community support funds, if I have any.
Sure.
All right. If nothing else.
Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to add a new item to the agenda under new business. I'd like to have a brief discussion if we could revisit the boat ramp fees.
Thank you.
I, I was trying to help Commissioner Hay, so I didn't know if you, under regular consent, the first item, A, needs to be moved to consent over 100,000. We have a mistake there. It's a $300,000 purchase of a fire truck that should be under, uh, seven consent.
All right. Six, eight, and two, seven. Okay.
John's gonna have to change.
There he is, he's right. So you're right there.
Okay, it's all yours. Thank you. And if the sound is on.
Hello, Commissioner Hay. Thank you for joining us. And the only other item that I'd also like to see if the commission is willing to discuss about our downtown and the future developments that are possible. I'd like to put, you know, basically have a five to 10 minute discussion.
Minimize it or something so I could.
Commissioner Hay, do you mind? Thank you.
Mayor, could you repeat what you said?
Thank you. So, um, I've been speaking with the institutions of higher education and different, uh, property owners and developers. And I'd like to get a consensus of where the city commission stands in regards to our current, uh, site plans that we have approved. And see if they were willing to discuss the ability of having higher education. Downtown rather than an 80% apartment, 20% retail office space. Uh, next. Yes.
Um, I think, I can speak for myself. I don't think the City of Boynton Beach should be trying to build a college or university, and we also currently have a commission majority vote from last board meeting, um, directing the developer to take one of two courses of action. So I, I'm not in favor of, we have a vote and a majority vote that has directed staff how to proceed with our downtown, and I'd like to stay that course.
Absolutely. I understand your position. This is for the properties, um, not just in our town square. This is including, uh, the Dalmata's properties, the Camelier's properties. I spoke with our developer, Mark Cefrin, and I spoke with Avison and Young. And, uh, the aspect of having this discussion is to, or the RFP that we have with Avison and Young for the possibility of expansion, because, as you know, we are including institutes of higher education in our downtown with our makers.
Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you. John, can you mute his line?
I did it twice.
Um.
So guys, I he- I hear what you're saying, Mayor, but just speaking for myself right now, uh, I put forth the motion. Let that motion play out. That, that's my position.
Yep, no, and I understand. And so I would need two other people from the commission if they want to have a discussion uh, for higher education or corporate offices in our downtown. Or, uh, the apartment rentals that we've already approved is sufficient.
Mayor, to be honest, I have only heard partially some of the things that you've said and partially some of the things that Commissioner Katz has said. So I'm a little lost in this conversation, so I can't even decide one way or the other, which way I stand, because I'm, I'm kind of confused to be honest.
Okay, so I'll discuss it at future agenda items, and we'll maybe have it for the next meeting in October. If the commission wants to have that discussion.
But if possible, can we have it muted at, at minimum?
No, I'm withdrawing my aspect.
I meant the background noise, Mayor, because it's gonna, I don't want it to prolong throughout the rest of the meeting.
What background noise?
Uh, Vice Mayor Pennsurgah, I believe Colin must have taken Commissioner Hay offline while he works out the issue, so.
That's what I meant.
Come back on, I will unmute if I do hear additional background noise until those issues are resolved.
All right, thank you, John.
Okay, so.
Um, for the sake of just helping clear up whatever confusion, can you please express what you were asking of us, Mayor?
So after speaking with Palm Beach State College and speaking with Keith O'Donnell from Avison and Young, I'd like to see where the commission's position is when we issue an RFP for our maker space to possibly include, uh, other properties and development in our downtown with the RFP to hopefully expand higher education in Boynton Beach.
In my opinion, I think that's outside of the scope of what we're doing, um, with, and, and we're not, the RFP isn't for a maker spaces for a, incubator space, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't think it necessarily fits into the scope of what we're trying to do with the RFP. Correct me if I'm wrong here.
But it says maker space on the wall, so that's why I call it that.
Oh.
So it's, I'd rather not have the discussion now and move forward with the, the meeting, and we'll discuss it at future agenda.
Okay.
So let's, uh, can I have the motion to amend to allow community support funds under 5B to move consent item six, eight to seven K and to add new business of boat fees?
Motion to approve as amended?
Do I have a second?
Second discussion, did we add in what Lori discussed moving that agenda item?
Yep, this six, eight is going to seven K.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Romulus, did you second it?
I did.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving forward for informational items by members of the city commission. Commissioner Katz, would you like to begin?
Uh, nothing to disclose. Uh, some residents called with regards to the boat ramp.
Okay. Commissioner Hay. Um, he's not on just yet. Commissioner Romulus.
Um, I, I have no disclosures, disclosures as well. I did receive numerous phone calls and emails regarding the boat ramp.
Vice Mayor Pennsurgah.
I don't believe that I have any disclosures that's relevant to the agenda. Um, so none of this time there.
Okay. Uh, for myself, September 3rd, I spoke with Palm Beach State College and requested that they do a tour of our historic high school and new city hall. I spoke with Eric Kelly of the Quantum Foundation about moving forward with the community partners of Palm Beach County to have navigators to help with the technology literacy of our community. On September 4th, I took a, a, um, tour of Ocean Breeze East and we, they, and Centennial Management has a item on tonight's meeting. I met with Keith, on September 9th, I met with Keith O'Donnell of Avison and Young, uh, discussed the RFP and what, uh, my vision is for the, the incubator space, maker space. I attended the Boynton Beach Police Department's flag raising. Um, on September 10th, I attended, uh, the Boca Chambers Golden Bell uh, for, at the beginning. On September 11th, I attended our, uh, Tom Kaiser Veterans Park and was there, and I was, uh, pleased to, to speak with, uh, our firefighter, our chief firefighter, uh, to came by and showed his respect and, uh, to tell the families who lost a son and, uh, a brother there. You know, part of, you know, being there, reading the names of every, you know, of over a thousand people that died. You know, I've learned that, you know, the, the mission of Osama bin Laden was to, to breed hate and violence in our country. And, uh, you know, I don't want that to be what we have here in the City of Boynton Beach. And so, you know, I'll ask all of our residents, visitors, businesses, that it's, it's okay to agree to disagree, that you don't have to have everyone to have the same opinion that you have, and that we all have a common goal to make things better for our lives, our families' lives, our friends' lives. And, uh, and then that afternoon, I had a meeting with Bill Morrison, Bradley Miller. On September 14th, I had a meeting with Fred Barks, the director of Palm Beach County School District's Adult Education, and in the afternoon, attended the, the Boynton Beach Tourism Task Force. So there's no other informational items. I'm not seeing, uh, that Colin is back on with Commissioner Hay. We will move on to announcements. Our first announcement is the quarterly update by Laura Landsberg, Marketing Manager, and the city census marketing efforts over the past quarter.
This is Laura Landsberg, the city's marketing manager. I am here to provide an update on the city census outreach efforts this past quarter and to remind the community that September 30th is the final deadline to respond and be counted in the 2020 census. Just to reiterate, that means we only have 15 days to go. As a reminder, every decade, the United States Census Bureau counts America's population and uses data to distribute $675 billion of federal funding to states and communities each year. The census affects people of all ages, races, cultures, ethnicities, regardless of citizenship. It is private, safe, easy, and very important to. Next slide, please. As of today, Boynton Beach's census self-response rate is 60.8%. It was 60.7 yesterday. As you can see in comparison, we are ahead of most of our neighboring cities, including Delray, Lake Worth, and West Palm, just trailing Boca. Please note that this number does not reflect responses obtained by census takers knocking on doors. We won't know this number until the official census numbers are released in 2021. Next slide, please. We are continuing to promote the census on our various social media accounts as well as our city newsletter. Next slide, please. In addition, we are still accepting entries from our Guess the Census contest. John, please play the video that would accompany this slide.
Okay, just a second.
Thank you. He, John, it's gonna play a news clip that we obtained coverage on the Guess the Census promotion that is, was created to uh, incentivize and, um, the, the community about the census and educate them, and also highlight the city's amenities as prizes.
Boynton Beach also offering an incentive to participate in the census. It's doing a Guess the Census giveaway. You can win, this is really good, free parking at Oceanfront Park Beach for a year, plus a yearly membership to the Schoolhouse Museum. To enter, you want to go to guessthecensus.com by September 30th.
I can't hear anybody.
Laura, you're self-muted right now.
Okay, great. Again, um, just to reiterate, that website is guessthecensus.com. We are asking the community to submit a guess as to what they believe the City of Boynton Beach's 2020 population will be. Once the numbers are released, we'll know that whoever is closest to, um, that actual number will win prizes that are, that are, um, donated by our city's amenities such as the children's museum and free parking in Oceanfront Park. More details are online, guessthecensus.com. Next slide, please.
Okay, just a second.
We are continuing again to promote the census and inform the community just about the census. We recently had some press coverage on the census and safety. Census door knockers are in the community as of May and knocking on doors, trying to get the community who hasn't yet responded to the census and, um, getting self, or getting responses through them. John, if you don't mind playing that clip as well?
Okay, one moment.
Thank you so much.
Boynton Beach Police say there are several ways you can tell if the census worker at your front door is the real deal. First of all, they will only show up between the hours of 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM. They will be wearing an ID badge. Their vehicle will have the words "official business" on it. The poll taker will show a willingness to social distance and will be wearing a face mask. They will be carrying an iPhone or a smart device. Census workers are going to be canvassing neighborhoods through the end of next month.
Next slide. Again, in order to inform the community about the census, we created an I-95 billboard campaign to communicate that census dollars fund emergency relief efforts, roads and highways and hospitals, among many other things, and reminding them that the deadline to self-respond is September 30th. Next slide, please. Throughout the end of the month, we are continuing our efforts, especially in hard-to-count areas. We installed a flashing road sign, Gateway 95, last month. We are continuing with our I-95 billboards as well as digital signage throughout the city. Our city staff are wearing census stickers at libraries, city hall, recreation as well. Uh, census reps have been assisting us and have been at locations throughout the area. They were recently at BJ's obtaining, um, census responses as well as, um, a few other events they have, they are coming. We have been giving out flyers and displaying our A-frames, uh, most recently at a backpack giveaway on August 7th, our Centennial Fruit Tree Giveaway at Saracens Park on September 12th. On this Saturday, September 19th, we have secured the Melt Bus, which is a bus with computers. They are going to be at El Presidente Supermarket on September 19th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, aiding the community in responding to the census. We also will have flyers distributed at, uh, two upcoming food distributions, one at Zell Hester Center on September 17th and one at the Boynton Beach Mall on September 26th. Next slide, please. In addition, throughout the month at City Hall, we will have our census, uh, reps and partners there assisting the community in responding. Next slide. That is the end of the presentation. I just want to encourage everyone who lives in Boynton Beach to please respond to the census by September 30th. You may respond online, 2020census.gov, or you can call. They have a 1-888-8 number in multiple languages. More information can be found on our website, boynton-beach.org/census. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Mayor. Uh, yes, um, Vice Mayor.
Yes, Laura, I just want to first commend you for everything you're doing, and clearly it is phenomenal, everything you and Eleanor have done. I do have a quick question to ask you. Now, I pay my water bill online, uh, and so I don't get a paper copy, but are we including some sort of notice about the census in the water bill?
Yes, that's a very good question. Thank you. We do have copy printed on the electronic, um, bills that is under important reminders. We have copy reminding people and giving the phone number and the website on how to respond. In addition, for those who pay their water bill through the mail, we included an insert that explained all information about the census in March when, when the census initial flyers were sent.
And Laura, my final question, as you know, we've been doing this, uh, census competition with other cities. Could you tell us, could you give us a brief update of where we stand relative to our neighboring cities?
Sure. Right now, we're in about, uh, fifth place. I have to get the exact numbers. We've moved up since the last month update, but we have another call scheduled in the coming weeks. Again, for those who don't know, we are participating, um, in a municipality contest, um, with, um, a several of the, our neighboring cities to see who can increase our census response rate percentage-wise. And, um, we, I should have an update on that probably by next week that I can tell you.
All right. Thank you so much, Laura, and great job.
And I appreciate your help with, um, participating in that as well, and helping communicate the census to the community. It's really helpful.
Thank you. And Laura, when would, should we have the, the answer who correctly guessed the census?
That's a really good question as well. We should have the numbers by April 1st of 2021. The census probably will have the numbers for the state of Florida by December 31st, 2020, but for drilling down to the municipalities and smaller cities, that number should be by April 1st, 2021.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hey Laura, I'll reach out offline. Um, I, I was thinking of an idea we could do to try to close out the next couple of weeks of the census that are left, so I'll reach out and we can work something out. I think something, we could do something very exciting to get some last-minute numbers up.
That would be great, and I do appreciate you as well when, um, I, I didn't add everything in the presentation to keep it short, but I, I know you participated in a radio outreach show with Ms. Carleen, and that really was helpful too, so I appreciate all of your assistance.
Absolutely.
Laura.
Yes.
Do you, do you have a gut feeling as to, uh, i- is it a challenge for undocumented, uh, citizens or do you have any kind of feel for that? Because I know some people are maybe a little afraid to fill out the census. Uh, do you?
Yeah, yes, that's a really good question. In fact, I reached out to our census rep, who we've been working with for over a year now, and, um, I did want to just talk to him about just the census responses and, um, just within our conversation, he did indicate that, um, that the political overtone that, um, um, did possibly help to dissuade some in the communities about responding, and we're doing everything kind of we can with the, the US Census Bureau to, to encourage, um, responses and just informing of why it's so beneficial for people to respond to the census, all the, uh, services that everyone utilizes. It's just so important and just to kind of move past that, um, with this citizenship, um, question, um, controversy that was several months ago. We're also just trying to kind of work hard with the census takers, just going out in the community now that they've been approved to do so and, and just get the word out. We have, um, also, our website has a lot of information about the census and it is translatable into multiple languages, Spanish and Creole. So really, that information is there assuring everyone that, um, it is safe to respond and, and, um, and just answer any questions that anybody might have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no more questions, we are going to move to our proclamation for the week of September 17th to the 23rd, 2020. It's Constitution Week. Marjorie Ferrer of the Daughters of the American Revolution will accept the proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, and it's my memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meaning of the Constitution so they can support, preserve, and defend it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2020, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us throughout, through this guardian of our liberties, remembering the lost rights may never be regained. Witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause a seal, Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, this 15th day of September, 2020. And so I believe I go here. We got the camera good working? All right. Would you like to say a few words?
Do you like us to?
Absolutely.
Just want to remind everyone about the Constitution. Um, if you haven't read it in a while, you should. Yeah, it's good, good reading. Um, we're celebrating the 100th anniversary of the right for women's vote, 2019. And, um, we, last year, we worked with Palm Beach School District, um, to, and, and they created a website that was made available to all the teachers, um, and all of the students, all the students. And, um, because so many of the classes are not in session right now, um, we, we got permission from the Palm Beach County School District to share the creation of that website with all of the school districts throughout the state of Florida. And we have now been reached by 18 different schools, and we have an opportunity to reach through our lesson plans over 1.2 million students. So we're really happy. It's one good thing that came out of COVID, and we thank you very much for your proclamation.
My pleasure. I've been reading or listening to, um, Plain Honest Men, The Making of American Constitution by Richard Beeman, and it's just fascinating how our country went from the Articles of Confederation. And it's just fascinating how our country went from the Articles of Confederation to the Constitution and the discussions and debates that all of those founding fathers had, where a lot of them didn't agree. You had all of the issues of states' rights, how do we have our bicameral legislature? And what power should the President have and what shouldn't they have? And it's just fascinating how, where we are 233 years later with the 25 amendments and all the different laws that the Congress has enacted. So thank you again for reminding the public that Constitution is a living document, that it does change, and that it's all of our responsibility to make sure that we can, we are picking the right people. And we have that opportunity on November 3rd, where you have the 17th Amendment, which gave control of the Senate from the state legislatures to the people. And so I'm just happy to say that I'm proud of the Constitution and thank you again for making everyone else aware of it.
Great. It's great. And then remember that in 2026 will be the 250th anniversary of America. So we're working toward that. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Our next proclamation is to proclaim the month of September as Deaf Awareness Month. June McMahon with Palm Beach County Association of the Deaf will accept the proclamation.
June McMahon is on video phone.
Okay.
She'll have to hear to accept that she will see, at her time, I'll see for her when she does.
Okay, so I'll, I'll say the proclamation, and then we'll go from there. City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas 93% of deaf children are born into hearing families, only 7% are born into deaf families. Whereas American Sign Language is the third most widely used language in the United States. Whereas deaf people do not feel that they are disabled in any way. Where in fact, we must recognize that deaf people can do anything except here. Whereas 466 million people worldwide have a disabling hearing loss, and 48 million Americans have significant hearing loss, and these almost 6 million are profoundly deaf. Whereas learn more about the types of educational programs and support services that are available to deaf and hard-of-hearing children. Whereas we believe Boynton Beach's deaf, deaf-blind, hard-of-hearing, and late-deafened individuals should have the same access to many benefits and opportunities available to live, work, play, and communicate in Boynton Beach. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of September as Deaf Awareness Month, and encourage all residents of our community to do your part and wear a clear mask, take an American Sign Language class, or learn more about deaf culture.
Hello. My name is June McMahon, and I live here in Boynton Beach. And I really appreciate all of the support that you give the deaf community here. We really appreciate it so very much. Thank you. And thank you for providing interpreters for your meetings. Thank you very much. Thanks, you guys. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next is the, I will recognize and present a certificate to the city's First Inclusion Works Business Partner, Joy Ford-Fredyke, and the Access Perfect Home Team at Keller Williams Realty.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Debbie Major, grants and ADA coordinator. And we're very, very pleased this evening to have our first Inclusion Works Business Partner, Kay. So I want to just recognize Beth Wiegmeister, our business outreach specialist, and Ted Goodenough, who has worked very closely with the team, Access Perfect Home Team at Keller Williams, to make this possible. They, they are an amazing group, and I'll let Joy tell you all about what they do and receive the beautiful certificate from the mayor. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, on behalf of the Access Perfect Homes Team at Keller Williams, I want to thank Mayor Grant as well as the City of Boynton Beach for really establishing such an amazing program. We've worked so hard to be leaders within the real estate industry in creating a more accessible world for people within their homes. And this program is really just going to help us become leaders outside of the real estate industry in the community and the business community to make the community at large more accessible. We've worked so hard at trying to identify underrepresented populations and how we can learn more about etiquette and meeting their needs in the home and just in interacting with them. We have established a real estate school to help extend that outside of our team within the real estate industry. And our next step is really to help increase the inventory, which is so low. It's not possible for us to meet the demand alone. We definitely need to increase the inventory of accessible homes, which is really our next goal. But as the inventory increases, we will have Realtors who are capable, ready, and willing to help meet that demand. So thank you so much, Debbie, and the City of Boynton Beach for this recognition.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask for a reconsideration of the, the order of our agenda to put the discussion of boat fees in front of consent agenda so that the individuals here do not have to wait through most of the meeting to speak on that item.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right. Thank you. Now we will move on to public audience. John, will you allow people to raise their hands and ask questions? And if there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please come up now.
Those options have been enabled, Mayor Grant.
Thank you. There's no one yet.
Susan Neuer, 140 Southeast 27th Way, Southeast 27th Way. I wanted to say thank you to Dwight and the rest of the cemetery staff and Colin for jumping all over the cemetery issue. I brought it up a couple of times. Colin, I found out, had gone and asked them to take care of it. I guess they didn't understand, or there was some kind of miscommunication where the damage was. It was rectified. I got four, five calls last Wednesday morning and emails even Tuesday night apologizing for the state of the cemetery. It has been rectified, and I wanted to compliment Dwight and everyone on the cemetery staff for rushing out once they figured out where the actual place was, where the damage was, to get this resolved. And thank you to everyone on the city staff, Colin, Catherine Meadows. I think his name is Kevin Ramsey, who's filling in for Andrew. Several people had reached out to me very quickly because they were unaware that it hadn't been resolved. But it's, to the best of my knowledge, everything has been resolved. I haven't been out there the last weekend. But Dwight and the guys at the cemetery did a fabulous job, and thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? So if you... Please state your name and address for the record.
Name is Fed Motner, address 2838 Southwest 8th Street, Boynton Beach Chapel Hill Development. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and fellow commissioners, and we want to thank you for keeping the annual program sticker available to all of us voters that use the Warrior Park. And it's reassuring to hear that you have put it on the agenda for further discussion. And I think with a little more community input, maybe some public outreach, we can come to a nice decision on what would be appropriate. And I really do want to thank you again.
Our pleasure, and we'll, we'll give you another opportunity to give us your input at that time. You're welcome. And so we will go on to people online who have their hand raised. Our first is Luanne Moore. I'm going to unmute you. You're currently self-muted. And so if you have your hand raised, please unmute yourself, and I will unmute you when it is your time to speak. So Luanne, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. We're having a little bit of difficulty hearing you. Can you speak a little bit louder into the microphone?
Oh, okay. Yes. So this is Luanne Moore. I'm at 133 Buffett Key. And I'd like to address the issue of the wireless telecom facilities that the city is permitting and the high-power antenna that is constructed at 755 West Boynton Beach Boulevard in close proximity to the public, apparently without an active right-of-way permit and permitted under, under one of our electrical permits. I would like to bring to your attention the city's own ordinances, Chapter 25, Communication Facilities and Public Right-Aways. Under Section 25.1-2, intent and purpose, we see that the intent of the city is to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. According to this section, the means by which they can do that include administration of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 and other federal and state law. This section clearly states, "In regulating its public right-of-ways, the city shall be governed by and shall comply with all applicable federal and state laws." Under Section 25.1-6, placement of maintenance or maintenance of a communication facility and public right-of-ways, we see that the plan, plans, plans and middle includes the specifications for the tele, for each communication facility and that the city is entitled to such additional information that the city finds reasonably necessary with respect to the placement or maintenance of the communications facility that is subject to the permit application to review such permit applications. The city may also permugate additional reasonable rules and, and regulations concerning the placement or maintenance of communication facilities and public right-of-ways consistent with this chapter and other applicable law. How can FCC and other federal regulations that protect the public be excluded from this review? The city has been sent, the complaints I've sent to FCC regarding the wireless telecom facilities being permitted, outlining the compliance issues, particularly regarding the extreme power levels emitted by some of our wireless large and small facilities. The lack of compliance with state and federal laws in this permitting and the questionable building code compliance issues with loading the towers is creating huge liability and insurance issues for the city and hazards for the publics. I urge the city to address these issues for public safety. It is essential that you not let these liabilities continue to compound and danger our citizens, our communities, and the, and the interests of the city. Other cities across the state and country are addressing these problems and finding solutions. I urge you to review such solutions and, and with respect to our ordinances and take action to protect the interests of the city. I would be glad to share with the city some of these resources and ideas I have found and would like to meet with the city to discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you, Luanne. Can you please state your, your name and address for the record again? I don't know if I forgot that.
Yes, that's Luanne Moore, 133 Buffett Key, Boynton Beach.
All right. Thank you. And in order to, to speak with us, I guess the, the best thing is to, to email the city manager, at citymanager@bbfl.us. And that way, you can have a setup and a meeting with the city staff to discuss the, the resources that you found.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next speaker is Annette Gray. I have unmuted you. Unmuted you.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Annette Gray, founder and president of GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute. That is a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit that is located at 1500 Gateway Boulevard, Suite 220. That's Boynton Beach, 33426. I want to thank you for your continued support and just make two announcements tonight. First, the Melt Bus is just really tickled and very happy. The team is excited to help with the support of the census. And we are locked and loaded and ready to go. We have hand sanitizers. We have masks. And last week, we were helping one of your neighboring cities. And I have to say, your team is amazing to work with. They have their acts together. So big high five to Eleanor and Laura and John. Your team is really amazing to work with and makes it really hap, easy for vendors and businesses to do business with the city of Boynton Beach. You have no idea, or maybe you do. Not so sure. So that's the first. The second is GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute is hosting its annual youth forum. And this year, it is a global youth, social, and criminal justice forum. This year, we will have a roundtable discussion. On one side of the table, we will have youth participating from all over the country. On the other side of the table, we will have social and criminal justice players. And part of that panel will be your own mayor, Mayor Stephen B. Grant, I thank you, and your chief of police, Chief Gregory. Those two professional participants will be joined by the consulate general of Jamaica, a district court judge, I believe, from Dallas, Texas, Delray Beach Community Chief of Police, several participants in different professional spaces from the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Department. We also have a juvenile court judge. And I think popping in will be an FBI agent. Can't seem to tie those fellows down. And just few other participants in, in just the social and criminal justice landscape globally. The, the young group is phenomenal also. We have participants from Jamaica, from Boynton Beach, from Delray Beach County and Washington, D.C. I am really excited. If you've seen just a sample of the list of questions that this young team has put together, it'll blow your mind away. So Mayor, I hope you're prepared.
I am prepared. I thank you for the questions, and we hit our three minutes.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. It's September 17th, 6 to 8 p.m. on Zoom. Have a great night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lois Smith. You're currently unmuted.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me on. I'm, this is my third week, as you know, coming before you. I first want to start by thanking you for helping some of the residents out in the city of Boynton. However, when I approached you three weeks ago at this, one of these meetings, I clearly stated that FPNL had been reached out to by your city officials and the Habitat for Humanity and several others came out to see the overgrowth that is happening around the wires connecting to the residents in my area. And nothing has been done to remedy the request. So what I'm still asking is that FPNL would honor the residents? Because we pay our utilities, as I stated before. We have been residents of Boynton. I am a citizen. I noticed you mentioned the Constitution and how you are basically proud of it and happy that, you know, we have a Constitution of the United States. But however, I want to be included in that in the sense that I'm a resident of Boynton Beach, and my request is not... and my request is not that far-fetched. I would appreciate it, sir, as you stated before, that you would see to it or check into FPNL coming out to help us out with the overgrowth around the electrical wires, the, in the residence areas. So please, I would beg you, plead with you, to give us some help in getting this remedied. Thank you very much.
And let me apologize because I requested FPL to look at the out light poles along Northwest First Street and Northwest 8th Avenue. I did not request anything regarding the overgrowth underneath.
Well, FPNL had been called mayor. They, they've spoken with several people by now. And they are very much aware that this is a very serious issue. And it needs to be, you know, taken care of ASAP. I, I just, you know, I'm at a loss as to what, you know, to what.
Let me finish in the senses that I will go drive by there tonight, the full Northwest First Street and Northwest 8th Avenue. If there's any polls that are out, I will do what I can to get their poll numbers. And regarding overgrowth, you know, there are certain responsibilities of property owners. And so there's only so much that FPL can do in regards to an easement that they may have with their polls. So, I'm going to double-check to make sure that there are no light, light poles out. And if you can give me specific addresses of where there is overgrowth, then we can move forward because the, the combination of just the, the streets is not enough. And so I will request, if you can provide that to us in writing at a later time, if you could just drop it off at City Hall, of any specific address that you would like the city and FPL to look at for overgrowth underneath the electrical lights.
Sir, did, did you not hear me? FPNL is aware by several requests that has already been made.
I did hear you, and I asked for specific addresses. If you can't give us that, it's going to be very difficult to, to move forward.
So you're asking specifically that you receive the specific addresses, not FPNL?
Correct. To have it dropped off at City Hall so that the city will make the requests and that we can follow through with anything. And if, if there's overgrowth in our easements, then we can do the trim, trimmings ourself.
Thank you very much. But I know your city came out and they were basically saying that the FPNL company has a responsibility to cut the growth around the wires. And they said that that is beyond their jurisdiction.
Absolutely. And so we need to make sure we have the addresses. Thank you very much. And I really appreciate you coming back to make sure that this problem is solved.
Mayor Grant.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Hay.
I would like to have a copy of that list because I also have some other areas that have a similar problem. And I, since that's in District 2, I can take that off your hand and, and push it on through.
Absolutely. It's, it's coming through City Hall, so I'll ask the staff here to give us both that information once we get it here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll have Code go out, Mayor, and take a look and, and, you know, I think they can assist with the responsibility levels of the, the ground vegetation that might be versus the overhead and we'll do what we can to help. Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you. And just to let you know, sir, I have paid several people to come out and do our cutting. We're waiting on FPNL to do their part. And that is what I'm saying. We've taken initiative as well, just to let you know.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And so I do see that Luanne Moore's hand is raised. And I will give her information regarding the city managers, but I do not see any additional hand raised or people asking questions. And so if that is the case, oh, if you, would you like to please come speak at the podium? Sorry, there was a hand raised here. I couldn't see. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm Claudia Jean-Pierre. I'm speaking on behalf of my uncle and my aunt, who live on 170 Northeast 27th Court, Boynton Beach, Florida. 33435. We've been having some issue with the water since forever. I remember last time there were hurricanes, hurricane, what's that? Maybe two, two years ago, probably. The water came all the way inside the house, like about like four feet up.
The stormwater.
Yeah, the stormwater. So every time it rained, there's always like a big pot of water in front of the house. We have a couple of videos to show, like, you know, some, like, the other day, there was some rain, even though it's a very small rain, but it does go up like so, because I don't know if because the, the front of the house is so deep. But whatever wa, water, rain we had, all the water comes in right here. So we've been having issue with that. And all the cars that, that's parked in that driveway been having some issue as well. A friend of us were over the house the other day and his car has to be towed. Because, yeah, when he started, all the water goes up and then he just hit right there. So we've been complaining. We've been coming here and he complains about that, but no one ever comes running, doing anything.
So can I get the address of the property one more time?
170 Northeast 27th Court, Boynton Beach, Florida.
All right, excellent. So we will speak with the utilities and Commissioner Hay is your commissioner. And so you and I will follow through to make sure that we look at the stormwater plan to see when something will be done and how soon something can be done.
Yes, please. We will be very appreciated because there's a lot of kids in the house.
And I understand you want something done today.
Not today. Not exaggerated like that, but something.
We've been over there since 17 years. Every time it's raining, I got scared, scared. So, that's time, because I don't know what, I don't know, it goes up. That's a very poor, my poor, so I can't go anywhere. I can stay over here, you know.
I understand. And so we will definitely look into this. Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We got you.
All right. And I don't see anyone new raise their hand or speak. So we will move on to administrative. Our first is appoint eligible members to the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. We have a couple applicants. We still have two regular and one alternate position available on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. An alternate for the Historic Resources Preservation Board. I'd like to nominate Rhonda Sexton for that alternate position.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed. Hearing none, motion passes. In addition, I have Lindsay Carton to nominate for the regular position on the library board.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 We have two more alternate positions on the library board and one more regu, for the regular on the Recreation and Parks Board. Our next item recently added is my remaining amount of my community support funds to go to 211. I know that when I get calls during the pandemic and I don't necessarily know where to send them, I send them to 211, whether they're residents or live in the unincorporated Boynton Beach. And so I request the remainder amount of my 2019, 2020 community support funds go to 211.
I support that, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a?
I support it.
All right. We have first and second, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Hay. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed. Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. In addition, we have brought up the item of boat fees to the beginning of our meeting. So I believe that staff has prepared a presentation to show.
Mayor, we, we anticipated this. So we, Andrew has a brief PowerPoint to, one, refresh you on our discussion a few meetings ago when we made the changes and added some more information and will help facilitate the conversation.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor and Commissioner is Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. Just wanted to go over the, a representation to go over to give you some good information so you guys can make a good, informed decision tonight. Just wanted to give you a little bit of update on what the operating costs look like at Oyer Park. This is not an all-inclusive list, but I tried to give you the best information we can. Obviously, we do landscape maintenance and litter removal, tree trimming, mulching, the irrigation, portable water for the irrigation. There's water and sewer costs, electric meter for electric services, the dumpster costs, and then we have park rangers and rec staff costs as well. That's roughly about $100,000 a year that we spend. That's directly related to that, that actual park, Oyer Park. Next slide. Just want to give you some of the upcoming CIP projects. I didn't go back into the list to see what we, some of the projects we completed. I know last year we renovated the Coast Guard building. This year, we have a project to redo the ramps and the floating docks. That actually is the design permitting and, and submitted for the grant. We, we did finish the design. We finished the permitting. We finished the permitting and submitted the grant. We did place 10th on the list for the grant, so it looks very promising that we'll get the funding from the Florida Inland and navigational district, about a half a million dollars. So then next year, we actually have a project on the books for replacing the ramp and, and the floating docks, about $1.25 million. That also will include, we're looking at installing some fishcut stations and the possibility of putting a type of boat wash or some kind of washdown area in the parking lot. As well as we have some sound attenuation and we're installing a concrete wall on the north property line to help mitigate the noise between the residents and the, and the park, as well as security upgrades. Again, as, as, as we, every park we touch, we are now installing security cameras, blue telephone, you know, and it's all going back to our real-time crime center at the police department headquarters. And then next, the following fiscal year, not next fiscal year, but the following one after that, we have another project is to replace the, the deck and the railing on the fishing pier, which is a total of about $1.7 million in the next two years. Okay, next slide. Just want to give you some of the information I updated, current versus the proposed rates. Right now, there is, the daily parking rate is $10 per day, weekends and holidays. We were proposing to go to $1.50 per hour, or, and that'll be 24 hours a day, noting that the, the hourly rate will be capped at $10 during the week and then 25 on the weekends, the max daily rate. Boat trailer parking, initially, we didn't, we did not propose to continue with the boat trailer parking permits. That's what kind of spurred the discussion at the commission meeting. And then the, the, at the commission meeting, it was set at $350 annually. That equates to about 96 cents per day annually, and then a break-even about 30 uses, after 30 uses. Just one side note, one of the things that we have, since we've gotten some previous grants at this park for improvements, we're, we're bound to not, we have to keep the rates the same for residents, non-residents, and, and residents of the state of Florida. So we can't differentiate prices for permits differently. Also, I gave you an update on the current revenue projections for 2020 at 330 passes at $50, it'd be about $16,500. 2021, 200 passes estimated would be about, at 350, would be about $70,000 in revenue. Next slide. So I did a weight comparison, you know, this is, this is a little bit hard to do because rates are kind of all over places and not every boat ramp is the same location, size, configuration. So I tried to get a good summary of different municipalities with boat ramps. So as you can see, Boynton Beach, $1.50 an hour on the daily parking rate, $10 weekday, 25 weekend. Lake Worth is $10 daily. Boca Raton is 25 daily for a Palm Beach County resident and 65 daily for a non-Palm Beach County resident. And then West Palm Beach is $1 per hour plus tax, and then they have a maximum daily of $10. As far as the boat trailer parking permits, as you know, ours is set at 350 annually. Lake Worth has a Florida resident pass permit, which is $53.50. A non-Florida resident pa, permit, which is $160.50, which is also the same as for the commercial fishermen. Boca Raton, on the flip side, they have a $60 permit for Palm Beach County residents and then a $480 permit for non-Palm Beach County residents. And then West Palm has a $50 Palm Beach County resident, $90 non-Palm Beach County resident, $300 commercial, and then a 500 non-resident commercial. Next slide. So just a summary, the previous fees allowed the parking during the week and did not cover the costs. The 50 annual, the $50 annual pass allowed unlimited weekend parking. The current annual pass fee will reduce the cost of using the facility for frequent boaters. Example, four trips per month, three days a week, one weekend, that is more than six hours weekday and 16 hours on the weekend. So just a little math here, no pass, it would be, cost you about $660 with the pass at 350, would have been 350. Weekend users at six hours on parking previous rate at $10, the current, the weekday, weekday pass users at six hours of parking would be, previous rate would have been $10 a day, at the current hourly rate, if you just went hourly, would be $9. Okay, next slide. That's the last one. And then I can answer any specific questions you have or if you want to let the public talk now.
Yep. So I think the, the ability to raise your hands or ask questions is up. And my big question right now is that you said in the, the cost, that there is going to be repair and replacement of the dock, of the launch. How long should that take? And, you know, will boats still be able to use that during the replacement?
I don't have all the answers for that, but we do anticipate that the project will be phased, that we'll have the boat ramp will maintain some access throughout the duration. There may be periodic closures of the entire ramp, but we don't anticipate long-term closures of the ramp.
And I saw with the other ones, are we able to give a Florida rate and a non-Florida rate?
We could do that. That is possible. That, I believe, the, I'd have to check with Debbie Majors or to verify with, with, from the grant requirements, but I believe we could, because that's similar to how, I think, West Palm or, I don't remember which one.
Can we go back to a couple slides to see the comparison?
Just one, two slides, please. Go back two slides.
There we go.
Yeah, the, the actually, Lake Worth actually had that.
Yeah.
Overdue.
And so, you know, I'm, I'm glad that the, the commission approved having the, the boat annual pass. I think it makes a lot of sense, similar to what we do at our oceanfront park. The issue is, is that this is our first year of increasing it since I've been mayor. I don't know how long it's been $50, but I could assume it's been a very long time. And so especially because we're doing the construction this year to do it, I'd kind of want to see, I don't want to overshoot because this does give us, as a city, a good amount of money in the beginning of the year versus, you know, somewhat over time. So I'd be wondering if the, the commission is willing to lower it to either $200 or $250 annually because there is going to be times when people who paid annually and are not going to be able to go out because of the, the different repairs and replacements that are going on for that boat ramp. Mayor. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, you know, the reason I ask for this to be, for us to come back to this topic and talk about it, is that it ultimately comes down to coming from $50 to ultimately becoming $350. And so And so I'm going to have to agree and say that I am in favor of reducing it. Because you know, whether we're talking about boat fees or any other fee for you to go from 50 to 350, that's a massive jump. And so I don't think that this is the best year to be raising any sort of fees. I would have a slightly different proposal. My proposal is that we maintain the $50 this year. And the next year, we can increase that after having some public input. But I don't think this is the best time to be making significant changes, certainly not a sevenfold increase. And that way we can get public input and we can get new calculations by then and perhaps, you know, maybe the 200 range might work. As you suggested, but right now I just don't think it's the best time to make significant changes.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
I just want to chime in, I I don't disagree with what the Vice Mayor is suggesting in terms of reducing from the 350, but I do not agree with going back to $50, especially with all the improvements and changes that we've seen, you know, we are making upgrades, we are making significant improvements to this park and to this boat ramp. And that comes at a cost and $50, you know, is is clearly not what we can continue to survive on in order to make these improvements and make this park worthy of what these boaters expect for what, you know, the city of Boynton Beach has to offer. So I do believe we do need to increase the rate. I never really agreed with the 350, so I am happy to revisit this and bring it to a number that I think is fair for residents and I'm I'm willing to hear public input now because I believe that's why we brought up this conversation. And in here what the public has to say, but I would entertain a 200 per year annual fee.
Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Hay.
That's also where I am. I think 50 is a little low relative to the other cities. And we are doing improvements and it is not cost effective what we're doing with our charges. So I I'll be willing to listen to public input for, you know, to see where they stand, but right now I would go along with the 200 and that would allow us to make adjustments in years to come.
All right. Mayor, if I may respond.
Yes.
So I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with my colleagues. If we look at this chart, in Lake Worth, the Florida resident pays 53.50. Boca pays $60 and in West Palm Beach, they pay $50. Now, I understand that, you know, it's not a direct comparison because we do have different amenities and different qualities, and I understand that there is significant improvements. And I have to agree that in the long term, it is not sustainable. The question is timing, is this the time to increase rates? My personal opinion is this is not the time, we need to make sure that we provide ample notification to the public. And then we can ramp it up. The improvement projects are not dependent on this price change, on this fee change. The improvements will not stop because we raised, you know, or we raised or didn't raise. So ultimately, yes, we need to bump it up, but not this year, but that's my take.
And you know, I am happy with the the $200 annual and whether it, we'll see what happens. Our C R City Manager has her hand raised, thank you.
I just wanted to to remind the commission and I we 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 budgeted revenues with the anticipation after we had that discussion of I think, you know, increasing the fee, so I don't know, I'm I'm I'll need what we end up at. If we don't do the 50 at all and wait a while, it's just going to have an impact on the budget, not not huge. But I just want you to to know that and then we'll go back once we figure out what number you want to use and I'll figure out what the difference will be, if any impact.
But yeah, I believe City Manager, if we, you know, if we have consensus with a number, we can see if we need to pull from reserves to make up the the difference and go from there.
And then also, we will need to re adopt the resolution, Mayor, so this will, once you give us direction tonight, we will bring a revised fee rate resolution back to the commission at our next meeting to approve.
Okay, and this will not affect the the meeting on the 22nd regarding our final adoption of the miller rate?
We can do it then, I we think it's probably going to be simple to change, so I think we can bring it back on that night at the same time. If you'd like to, if not, we we can do it the next, the October 6th.
Yeah, I think it's it'd be simple that way, we know exactly what the budget is and how we can move forward. All right, yes, Commissioner Romulus.
And just to clarify about the rate changes and the fees. You know, the other reason why I believe this annual permit came as a topic of discussion initially was because the fact that we're adding we're adding parking structures, whatever they're called, what are they called? Somebody help me, please.
Automated parking meters.
Right, we're we're adding that, so that was also in a way to mitigate the cost for that, because if a resident who is in an avid boater or a commercial boater is going to be going out consistently and having to pay those parking fees, it ultimately adds up. And so the comparable in terms of getting an annual pass is 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 definitely more palatable, so you know, I I just want to make sure that that we don't forget that this is the reason why this conversation came up in the first place. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
And is there anyone else from the commission that would like to discuss or are we ready to move with the motion for a rate change? So Commissioner Romulus, would you move forward with a a motion to change the rate from 350 to 200?
Mayor, don't we have public comment on this item?
I I so we had someone who came here earlier and I do not see anyone raising their hands or asking questions.
I'd like to at least offer it before we take a vote, that way we make sure we don't get backlash for saying we didn't listen to the public.
Do you have any comments? Okay, so we only have, you know, as I mentioned, there was one person that spoke that public comments. And I do not see anyone raising their hand or asking a question. And so we all have had the opportunity to speak with the the public beforehand. And it's it's kind of, that's the sense that we are at right now is that we have from the scale of $50 to $200, 250 to 350. And so if someone would like to make a motion, we can move forward, if not, it will stay at 350.
No, Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion, I just want to make sure we gave ample opportunity for public input.
Absolutely, and I think they took the opportunity to speak to us before the meeting. So.
So moved for $200.
Do I have a second?
I'll I'll second with question.
Yes.
I I want to know the impact, I thought we were saying that that City Manager would go back and not tell us what that impact would be on on the on the budget. And I I'm not so sure that I I feel uncomfortable as Vice Mayor has stated. And this and this day and age, we're we're going from $50 all the way to $200. And what is the what is the income coming from the parking meters? How how will that offset? Wouldn't that also be, is there a figure that someone can give me as to how much income? You probably said it said it before, but just say it again, what kind of income are we expecting from the parking meters?
If you give me a second, Mayor, I can look it up and I'll I'll just give me a second, I'll look it up.
If if I may interject, Commissioner, I I think the question I think that we should probably be asking in in addition to what impact does it have on us is what impact does it have on the residents? So I I believe from the presentation, Andrew was mentioning that there was a 92 cents per day charge if it's a 350 number, I I think it's also relevant to ask that question of what does that look like? And what's the comparable based on if it were to be just the parking permits or the parking structures that we have out there and no opportunity for an annual permit? What would the actual cost be and what's the comparison for those two options?
I can give you the the answer for the proposed revenue. So the current revenue that we have budgeted this fiscal year is 320,000 for daily parking fees. And then we had 170,000 budgeted for parking permits. Next fiscal year, we have 680,000 for daily parking fees and 170,000, we we left it flat for parking permits.
That include the beach?
That was also because we didn't propose a boat trailer parking permit as well.
So so Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager, those numbers include the beach. If you look at just Oyer Park, we had we had anticipated going to 350 that we would have a reduced number of passes because right now if somebody buys a $50 pass and they use it four times a year, it pays for itself. At 350, you really need to use it about 30 times a year, 25 times a year for to pay for itself. So we we based our budget on about 200 passes, boat passes being sold once that was once that was decided at 350, so the reduction to 200 would mean about a $30,000 reduction in the budget. Of course, to 50, you can do the math, 200 times 300, which is, you know, I think I could do that in my head, about $60,000 budget reduction, so that would be the impact just on the passes. We think the hourly parking would be the same, we don't think that would change, although we we do think that you know, the 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 problem is 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 the less expensive the passes, the more people use it on the weekends, that fills up the parking for people paying hourly who only go three or four times a year and use hourly rate, so that does also impact the revenue. Very difficult to deciding to determine, we do projections based on the numbers we have over the last five years and then we project forward to try to figure out what that revenue is going to look like. And so that's kind of how we did, hopefully that answered your question.
All right, Laura. Yeah.
Mayor, just also, you know, I want to just point out, so you have it as part of the consideration in your your discussion is the boat ramp is not a a typical city park, it's a a special amenity that's a very costly amenity, as you can see in next year's budget, we will be utilizing surtax dollars and this grant. These are improvements that should have happened years ago, but frankly, we did not have them, 1.2 million dollars to do it. So we are able to do that, but this should be considered more of a user rate funded type of amenity. Like our tennis center, you you pay as you use, you pay as you play. You should be paying as you utilize the boat ramps and and not not on the back of the entire community, but those that actually use that amenity.
So that's that's kind of where, you know, my theory, you know, with either the 200 or 250 is that it is somewhere in the middle. And especially with our new data, we're going to have great information to adjust it for next year. I think if we skew it at 350, we may not get enough parking passes. And you know, we're going to have daily, you know, daily parking versus if we have the two if the parking permit is too low, we're going to have too many parking permits and not enough daily fees. So it's it's something that the the board is going to have to take and make the business decision in keeping in mind with our residents. And I think the the $200 is fair. Because it is somewhere in between, you know, 15 or 20 times to break even versus 30 times, which is, you know, more than two a a month. So this is is kind of meant for our residents and, you know, Commissioner Romulus, I'd also like to amend if, you know, as Andrew Mack mentioned that we have to keep the the 350 for non Florida residents if possible.
Um, I I'm fine with that amendment if if the rest of the board or whoever is in favor of this agreement thinks it's fair.
So we'd ask Commissioner Hay to reaffirm the the amended motion.
I I affirm the amended motion.
All right.
For the 350 for non Florida residents.
And 200 for Florida residents.
200 for Florida residents.
All right, and is there any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I heard three. Commissioner Katz and Commissioner Vice Mayor Pincirga, are you for or against?
Mayor, I will be dissenting, it is a nay. Not that I am not in favor of a decrease, but if it is still a fourfold increase this year, this is not good timing.
Okay. And hearing nothing from Commissioner Katz, he will be voted in favor. So motion passes four to one. All right, thank you so much for the discussion, we're going to move on to consent agenda. And would anyone like to pull an item from consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor.
Which one?
I like to pull 6B as in Baker.
Okay. And
Yes.
6B is authorize the finance finance department to reduce the allowance for uncollectible accounts and the accounts receivable amounts by 167,551 on 1,204 customers. The amount includes small balances less than $25. This amount consists of unpaid utility and solid waste billings, miscellaneous charges, taxes and other adjustments that have been in collections over one year prior to September 2019, the currents of the last write off through November 2017, final accounts with balances. This period is defined as November 2017 through September 2019.
Yes, I would just like staff to give the rationale behind the behind this 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 particular one, this item.
So, yeah, Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager, this is an this is an accounting function that we have to do to balance our 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 books in the city. Basically, what these are is these are accounts that somebody has not paid and they've been over a certain amount of time and we're carrying that unpaid debt on the books as as a balance. And what this does is take it out of the balance and put it below the line. It does not erase the debt for those customers. Most of these customers are people who have rented, who are renters, a lot of them are very small amounts. They're commercial businesses that may have gone out of business and disappeared, some of them are solid ways where somebody may have had a dumpster, may have had a trash collection and didn't pay their bill. So what we we, the reason we write these off is it takes it out of the city's unbalanced part of the books and it puts it under the so it's not part of the balance of the city. They still stay on the books as collectible, so if a customer comes back in and tries to sign up for account, they still owe the debt. It still goes, these also go to collectors, so collectors still have, our collecting, collection agencies still have these to try to collect. A lot of these are going to be less than $25, so there's not a lot of effort to collect them. And I would like to point out, Laurie says I don't brag enough, but I would like to point out, if you look at the numbers over the last several years, when I came here about seven years ago, this was an extremely large number. We were writing off, you know, on an annual basis, you know, 750 to a million dollars a year. But based on y'all's policies that you you passed and you you gave us to run, we're down to less than 0.01% of our overall revenue each year. And it's it's really a drastic decrease and it's really based on how we bill people and how we do payment plans and how we work with people who are struggling a little bit to pay. And it's also how we collect deposits and how we use deposits, so when somebody, if 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 they do walk out, their deposit is used then to cover those accounts. So we've done a lot of work to lower this number as low as possible, but I do want to reassure everybody, this is not a write off saying we're not going to try to collect. It's simply an accounting method to take it out of the balance of the city's books and put it below the line, so it doesn't count toward our balance.
It's it's the difference between accounts receivable, correct? And another another budget item.
That is correct.
Sorry, Commissioner.
Thank you, Colin.
Um, my question regarding are debts over five years old? Do we try to put a lien on it or what do we do for debts older than five years?
So the policy that we passed several years ago, this is probably three years ago, almost four years ago, is we do have a policy to put lanes on properties. We also look, we base it on the amount of debt, if it's a 25 or $30 debt, we're not going to go through a lien process, it's just way too expensive. What we look at is a percentage of the value of the property, so if the debt reaches, you know, 25, 30% of the value of the property, then we start the lien process and yes, we put liens on properties. And then when those properties come up, if it's a homesteaded property, when they come up for sale, that lien shows up and when that And when that sale occurs, that lien, that debt then is paid back to the city. Those are the policies we've done to lower this number, because those really do work. It 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 makes sure when properties change hands, when commercial tenants come back in, when renters go from one apartment to another and they leave a bad debt, the next time they're picking it up, they pay the debt. Those are the ways we we get this number really, really low. And I know some of you all have been on the commission for a while and you've seen these numbers have been really high in the past.
So so my my concern is, is that for debts over five years that we have not put a lien on, that is, it is outside the statute of limitations for an account statement to collect on or a contract.
That that is correct. That is correct if it's if it's, like I said, we don't do liens for the small amounts, the twenty five, thirty five, forty dollar ones, we don't do it. It's just not, the the paperwork just to do the lien is much more expensive than that.
All right.
But but numbers higher than that, we do have liens on lots of properties all over.
And I I'm aware, and so that's kind of where I wanted it, because I have heard complaints of people saying that there are amounts owed, but there was no lien on it and it was over five years. And so I just want to make sure that we're not penalizing new people who have no idea that there's a lien on it or there's an amount owed on the property without a lien.
Right, Mayor, we do have policies for that also. So if somebody buys a piece of property, there's not a lien and there there's, we do have policies on how to reduce those amounts also, so they don't pay it. So we do have some forgiveness things in there within the realms of our bond documents and 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 other documents that we have to make sure we stay in compliance with the law. But yes, you're absolutely right. We, you know, small amounts, we do, you know, they still stay on the person to collect. They stay on there because they've been turned over to collections and that's a longer time period, my understanding is. But we don't do liens on small amounts, but we do do them on the on the on the larger ones.
Thank you so much. So Commissioner Hay, can I have that motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Hearing no more for discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving forward with the remainder of consent agenda under one hundred thousand. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Any for, may I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent and bids and purchases over a hundred thousand. And keep in mind, Commission, that item six A is now seven K. I'd like to to pull a joint item of item seven C and seven I. Hopefully, ABM has a presentation to show us what they're doing and how they're working with us for the future. Does anybody else from the the commission have an item to pull? Seeing none, let's move forward with item seven C, which is award task order to Town Square Maintenance Services as part of contract number zero zero nine for Town Square City Facilities Maintenance Services and authorize the city manager to issue a purchase order in the amount of five hundred fifty six thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars per year.
Commissioner Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. We have Chad Armstrong from ABM Online and I'm going to let him speak. I'm not sure if he has the presentation. He gave it last time, but he can certainly talk about what the questions were concerning how they're going to do their job fairs and their and the recruitment of employees and and training of our citizens on how to how to get a job with ABM and how to and improve their ability to do that. Chad, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, hi, good evening. Thank you, City Commissioner of Boynton Beach. This is Chad Armstrong, the General Manager for South Florida. I hope everybody can hear me okay. Is there some heads nodding? Okay, good deal. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Colin, for the lead in. Yes, in the presence of preserving your time, we had given the overall high level presentation of our approach. And Mr. Mayor, in the past several weeks, we have worked very closely with Lori's staff, Colin and Andrew, Kevin, Matt and Gail to finalize the scope of work, the specific statement of work and line items that we would be serving for the city hall and community in maintaining and operating those facilities. As such, we have reached a a general rev ten, we call it, revision ten of that agreement. And we have tied off all of the details pertaining to satisfactory operating, maintaining your facilities. In doing so, and I had taken down a note to try to get with potentially Laura Langberg in the marketing group, we would be upon successful approval of the pricing structure, which was what the was put forth to the commission tonight. We would be holding the job fair on the twenty fourth or twenty fifth of next week to hopefully secure some successful candidates for the October first start date to support Andrew and Colin and Lori's teams. And and Colin and Andrew, I didn't know if there was anything you all wanted to add, but we we did not go back over the presentation, Mr. Mayor, given that this last couple of weeks has been finalizing the statement of work, which is all contained within the original award task order F dash two dash twenty twenty.
All right. Thank you so much, Chad. And, you know, that was kind of it that I really wanted to know is the, you know, when the job fair starts. And, you know, one of the the main concerns that I have is for the the future. And I know that you have, the ABM has a lot of entry level positions. And sometimes it might be a step up from entry level. And so my goal is to help educate the the public here with using your company as the model of how do we use a a career path for people that are in high school or just out of high school or in college or just out of college to use any of those skill levels as the entry level. And for you to give us that information, because you are a very big company with openings throughout Palm Beach County and South Florida, so that we can create a relationship so that our citizens have an equitable idea of what it means to succeed with your company.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. It it honestly resonates very loudly with me personally. We have a lot of vertical integration and growth opportunity. It's global, so even more so than Palm Beach. We are very, very good at relocating or repositioning. If a team member feels as though for family, they need to move. Case in point, and I'll be brief. We had a consolidated services gentleman whose parents, he lived in California, had some success with our group out there. His parents fell ill in Fort Lauderdale and he is now transferring within my business group to speak specifically to the opportunities and career growth to forward facing the city of Boynton Beach. If there is a point person that I could work through, we actually, and I, like I said, it resonates very much, completely notwithstanding any of the opportunities that are contained within us serving your city hall campus. There are a lot of opportunities, as you had said, within ABM. And I'd like to make sure that we resonate that message, not in a one time singular fashion, but we set some sort of cadence. And I don't know if that's probably quarterly, not quite monthly, but that we have an exposure of some method. And if you could just point me to someone within Boynton Beach that I should maybe connect with, either through or in parallel with Colin and Andrew, I will do that immediately and keep you up to date.
I think it's, you you have the right person, Laura Landsberg, who hopefully can help, you know, spread the marketing information. And I guess it would be with our Parks and Recs so that we would be able to give you the facilities that you need to reach out to our community.
Excellent, and we could start to arrange specifically this job fair and then something periodically going forward, which would be wonderful.
All right, so we got the twenty fourth and twenty fifth, and so we'll tentatively let people know and we'll coordinate with you for a facility.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, may I have a motion on item seven C?
We'll move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Is there any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. All right, I'll withdraw my item for seven I and ask for approval, a motion to approve the remainder of the consent and bids and purchases over a hundred thousand.
We'll move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Our next is public hearing regarding city commission. Will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. Pose ordinance number twenty dash zero one five, second reading. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Twenty dash one zero five, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving amendments to the comprehensive plan utilities element to include an update to the ten year water supply facilities work plan, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
All right. And so what, I'll ask for information on this. What are we approving? What are the amendments?
All right, Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. I thought there was somebody else that was going to speak to this, but I can do that. This is the second reading. This is something we have to do routinely to provide in our comp plan where and how we're going to get our water for a ten year cycle. This was read to you, I think, and I'm I'm guessing January or February is the first time we brought it to you. I mean, there was a whole presentation, which we weren't going to do tonight. But it basically spells out what the utility is doing to make sure we have adequate water supply for the next ten years for our customers. We actually look at more than ten years. We look at a fifty and sixty year plan as a utility, but we're required to adopt the ten year plan, work plan in the comprehensive plan. And that's what you're doing tonight is the second reading. The state has approved the plan and it's back to you to review and approve.
All right. So I was looking at figure two point one, and it says that Lake Clark Shores, I guess, has a water boundary within our city. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. There's a small, small area that's south of, my mind's going blank on roads, it's on Lawrence.
North of St. Lucius.
Yeah, north of St. Well, no, it's, this is the trail park on, it's off of Lawrence Avenue, south of Hypoluxo. That's the one I was looking for.
Yeah.
And so that's their service area. And then they also serve the area around St. Lucius High School. That whole area, they serve that area too, so.
And so is the city moving forward with the discussions with the Lake Clark Shores to hopefully purchase or work with them so that they don't have a middle of a, in the city that we can expand our utility?
We do not want the rumor out there that we're purchasing. No, we are working with them to supply them wholesale water and sewer services to those areas. Absolutely, we are working with them and we're going to form a partnership. I think we're very close to something to bring to you, to you for review and approval.
All right, thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Everybody. All right, seeing no further discussion, anyone from the public would like to speak?
Mayor, Mayor Grant, this is John McNally. I have Michael Lowe with his hand raised.
All right.
Or now, Michael, would you like to speak?
Actually, I I was prepared to speak earlier when Colin was speaking. I have nothing else to add.
All right. Thank you. If nothing else to add, may I ask for a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
It's a yes. Well, I don't know what happened there, but yes.
Okay, Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
All right.
I think that was me, yes.
Vote is five oh.
All right. Thank you. Our next item is eight B, approval of the Exotic Motor Works Conditional Use Application to Allow An Automobile Diagnostic Facility Exclusively For Luxury And/or High Performance Vehicles At Eight Sixteen Southeast First Street.
Mayor, since this is a conditional use application, it's conducted as a quasi judicial. So I would ask that anybody who intends to speak to this swear or affirm that the testimony they will give will be true and correct to the best of their knowledge and to affirm that they have given that affirmation or that they have sworn when they introduce themselves and speak.
All right, do we have the the applicant there? Or here?
Mayor, I believe there was a presentation, but I'm waiting for.
So I see Joel Lopez, he had his hand raised and then it just disappeared.
Hello?
Hi, we hear you. Is that?
Yes, we have sworn in.
All right, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Elizabeth Lopez. I'm going to be the one that is doing the presentation on behalf of Joel Lopez.
All right. John, do we have it in the the backup? Oh, he's not, he's. Yeah, I don't have the. Now, we got, that's a resolution. Can you scroll down? It's it's eight. Eight B. Yeah. And so was there a PowerPoint presentation or?
Yes, there is a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. So.
John, the PowerPoint presentation is in your shared drive if you could bring it up. There we go.
Go to the next slide, please. Okay, so first of all, thank you all for taking the time to listen to us today. We are here asking for the conditional use of eight one six Southeast First Street. This is for the approval of Exotic Motor Works in order to allow automotive diagnostic facility exclusively for luxury and high end performance cars. So their main work is working with computers and diagnosing the engine. So there is no need for any dyno testing or any, if there's anything like that. Please. Sorry about that. So the South eight one six South Ace First Street, this is a photo of the building itself from the residential side. So this building is a family owned and operated business. We have two family owned and operated businesses that are currently running from this building, which is the Art and Technology Dental Lab, as well as Cold Formers USA, which is run and owned by the Lopez family, which is the same owners of the building. And as far as signs, none of these businesses have illuminated signs above the doors or anything like that. There is a small space above the door in order to put a law, a non illuminated sign. If you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So as far as parking, the photo you saw prior was in the east entrance, which is where Joel will have one parking space. And then in the back of the building, he will have two parking spaces. So there is no impact on any automotive or pedestrian traffic. And as you can see in the photo here, sorry about that. This is a photo of the office space itself. It's unit number four and it is large enough to accommodate a vehicle inside of the building. So the, as far as the appointments, I do apologize for that, working from home.
We, I've had dogs bark at the meetings before, just continue, it doesn't bother. We, I've had dogs bark at the meetings before, just continue. It doesn't bother us.
Thank you. So he is working on an appointment basis only. So there should only be about two to three vehicles at the building at a time, and that is including his vehicle that will be parked in the front. Right? So it's one vehicle on the front, one vehicle inside of the space, and he does have two additional parking spaces in the back. You can go to the next slide, please. So this is an illustration of the building and parking structure. So. The current tenants, they only use the backspace of the building just for their trash bins and being able to take that out on the garbage days. So Joel and Cold Firmers USA are the only ones that really use the backspace of the building. But as you can see, the two highlighted parts in the back of the building, that's where he has his two parallel parking spots. And then one parking spot right in front of his unit number four, and there are no proposals for any structural changes that need to be made. Made. You can go to the next slide, please. So again, the uses, the usage for South Ace, South. Eight one six Southeast First Street, it's mainly to be used as an office space where Joel will be storing all of his. Diagnostic equipment. This is specialty equipment and computers that are very expensive, so they do need to be stored in a safe and secure facility. And this is where he will also be doing a lot of his office work, you know, with like invoices and things like that. So there is no, again, like. Loud noises or anything like that that need to be happening in this office building and most services are provided off site. At dealerships and repair facilities, so there only will be rare occasions where vehicles will be brought to the office to. Have any diagnostic testing done to them. If you can go to the next slide, please. So as far as the effect on the residents, there will not be any loud noises or any dyno testing of any cars. The bay doors where you are able to, you know, enter. A car through the doors, they are on the east side of the building, so they are not facing the residential area. So there is no view or noises of the business operations themselves. There will not be any strong odors or chemicals that are being used. And this does have a minimal economic impact on any adjacent properties and the city as a whole. If anything, the city actually benefits from the business because of different fees that need to be paid by Joel. If you can go to the next slide, please. As far as safety and sanitation, the city of Boynton Beach Utility Department currently serves the building. There are. No needs to be, or no changes that need to be anticipated from this. Like I previously mentioned, Joel will be using this as an office space for the majority. So it's only really any trash that is coming from him, so there's no need for anything big. And there will not be any needs of any disposable hazardous fluids. And there, again, no harmful smoke, orders, fumes, any toxic matters, anything like that. This is diagnosing of the vehicles with the computers. You can go to the next slide, please. Okay, so just to wrap everything up again, Joel is looking for the conditional use of eight one six Southeast First Street. For the approval of exotic motor works in order to allow for automotive diagnostic facility exclusively for those luxury and high end performance vehicles. And that is the end of my presentation. So at this time. And yes, M one commercial. So at this time, I am happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, you know, this is exciting. And so. I will, you know, the term luxury and high performance, what is your definition of those terms?
So that Joel is here and he can answer that question for you.
Hello, Mayor. So again, the luxury and performance, basically what I specialize is in, is in like Bentleys, Ferraris, Lamborghinis, Maserati and stuff on that, on that end, Rolls Royce.
Okay. And so my next question would be is that are these vehicles on their, coming to the location on their own power or this through tow trucks?
Uh, mainly I go out to do the services, anything that comes in, most of the times will be in on a tow truck.
Okay, so now I just wanted to get a better understanding of how this is, is going to work. So this is also the ability to. Use this facility to go to other locations as well. Let's say, you know, the vehicles not running, you would go to their driveway. However, you would need the conditional use. To use this as a principal office?
Yes, correct. Well, I actually, most of my business I do is for other dealerships and other repair shops. Uh, now this location here will, correct, like you said, it's like a physical address where I can pretty much have everything rolling and also keep all my equipment and stuff.
Alright, so yeah, no, I'm excited for this. Uh, my father-in-law's got souped up Corvette, so I'm all in favor.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Romulus.
Um, my question is how much noise will this generate? Um, this is a major concern, especially after having to deal with. The concerns with the, um, I forget the name of the company that used to be here that used to test jet engines and that was.
Must have been placed with a dyno. Uh, again, like I said, I don't have a dyno. Most of my work is just electronic diagnostics, so I don't. Produce any noise. And also if I am working on a vehicle at that location, it will be inside, it won't be outdoors, so nobody will hear anything.
And working inside, there's no like revving the engines or any of that stuff that would cause a lot of noise or anything?
So that, what you are referring to is the dyno testing. Dyno testing is when they do rev the engines to do that sort of testing. Joel only hooks up the computers. To the engine in order to be able to read them and find what the problem is. So there is no need. To rev the engines or honestly, half the time the car does not need to be on in order to be able to. Hook the computer up to it and test it and run it. So there will not be any revving of any engines. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Um, maybe this is a question for legal. Is there any way to make sure we add any, uh, make clauses for. Noise mitigation to, in order, as a condition of approval? Again, I just don't want to go down the path of having. The same issue that we had with the previous business owner, I guess that used to be in this area and having to deal with complaints from neighboring. Residents who are hearing the issues with the cars, the noises with the cars.
Well, that condition of approval would be something like that the applicant shall adhere to the city's noise ordinance. Which they require to do anyway, but it could be added as a condition. I don't think the applicant. Will object to it. I've heard the presentation, the planning and development board. And also tonight, and I, I think they've been pretty clear about the method of their, their business. So. I doubt there would be an objection to adding that as a condition.
Well, if the applicant would be, would be in agreement with that, I would like to add that as a condition of approval. Other than that, I'm fine with this. This application.
I have no objection with that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, may I have a motion to approve with the additional condition?
So moved.
One other question. Before we make the motion, would that be in the reason, Mr. Lopez, for large stores of products or. Uh, parts that you would have to store?
Uh, no, I don't have to store anything pretty much. The only thing I do is just the computer diagnostics of the vehicles. So I don't, I don't need to store anything on the outside. All I have on the inside is basically just my equipment and my tools.
Okay. With that being said, a second motion.
Alright, thank you. Do I hear any further discussion from the, the city commission? Hearing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next is proposed ordinance number twenty dash zero three one.
Mayor, th- these next two items go together. Could I read both ordinances by title and then the commission could take up one public hearing on it and. Separate motions on adoption?
Yes, please.
Alright, so it's ordinance zero oh three one, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance eighty nine thirty eight. By amending the future prop, future land use element of the comprehensive plan for properly, commonly known as. Ketten Zero Residential and described herein, changing the land use designation from local retail commercial. To medium density residential, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. And ordinance twenty dash oh three two, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance oh two oh one three. To resell a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as the Ketten Zero Residential. From C two neighborhood commercial to R three multifamily residential, providing for conflicts, severability and an effective date.
Do we have a presentation or does the commission want a presentation?
Mr. Mayor, this is Bradley Miller with. Urban Design Studio. I'm here to represent the, the applicant. If you want a presentation, be happy to give it. It'll be one of the shortest that you've ever seen me give.
Uh, that's, that's kind of why I want to know if the, the board wants to hear it. The way that I see it is, is that it's changing a, a lot that is one block from the Gulf Road Southeast twenty third back to. Medium residential and not a commercial so that a house can be built.
I'll give it a quick explanation. A few years ago, we did change it to the commercial designation that it is. My client, who's the same client as it is tonight, had a, a local business and he was going to put his office there. And then since then, he, he sold his business. So he doesn't need the property for an office space anymore. He's been marketing it for about a year as office space. And has gotten zero interest, but he's gotten about fifty calls to build it out for residential. So that's why we're here.
Absolutely.
Well, in that case, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the, the commission? If not, may I have a roll call for ordinance number twenty dash zero three one?
Vice Mayor Prinsorga?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
I have a motion on ordinance number twenty dash zero three two.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Katz?
Uh, I haven't heard him.
Maybe I put him to sleep.
He's having connectivity issues. He just texted me. He's.
Did he text aye? Okay. Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye, I'll send mine via text too.
Alright.
Thank you. Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. My name.
Vice Mayor Prinsorga?
Aye.
Uh, the, the phone, I believe, is five oh. I believe our, our city clerk also has some connectivity issues as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the city manager's report, proposed resolution number R twenty one zero four. And R twenty dash one zero five, I'll join these. Approved and authorized the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement with Florida International University to prepare a diversity and equity assessment of the city systems that will review the city's internal systems, policies and processes. To establish the capacity to assess, implement and monitor a social and racial equity strategy and foster cultural. Of diversity and inclusion. The assessment will produce a final report summarizing the key findings. And provide detailed policy recommendations to address the needs, challenges and opportunities. Further training will be provided in two phases for all city employees. Proposed resolution, our number R twenty dash one zero five, approved and authorized the city manager to sign. An interlocal agreement with Florida International University to prepare a racial and social equity comprehensive community needs assessment. To include three phases, an analytical analysis of the city's demographics and establish focus areas. Local community engagement and a final report summarizing the key findings under each policy area. And provide detailed policy recommendations to address the needs, challenges and opportunities.
Thank you, Mayor David Scott, Director of Economic Development Strategy for the city of Boynton Beach. Um, we have, uh, joining us representatives from FIU that will be able to, uh, walk us through this presentation. But I just wanted to open, um, the conversation up and introduce the, um, two resolutions as you have. Uh, so done, but just to remind the, the public that, um, the commission is very, um, supportive. Of, of diversity and inclusion and concern with racial and social equity. So they asked staff to proceed with, uh, pulling together a team that will take a look at both external. Um, challenges as well as internal structures to determine, uh, what, what needs to be done. Uh, identify any blind spots and then hear really from the stakeholders, those stakeholders being our, our residents, our businesses. Our visitors, uh, to, to the city of Boynton Beach. With that, we partnered, looked at best practices throughout the country. Um, attempted to determine what social equity and, uh, social frame, or equity framework looked like. And we found that most cities are very, uh, individual. Uh, their issues are individual, um, and we recognize that Boynton Beach, um, is no different. So it's important for us to understand our own community, understand what our blind spots are. And then move forward towards a, a equitable city. Additionally, we want to establish a baseline for the, uh, for the city of Boynton Beach so that. Five, ten years from now, we can compare ourselves to the baseline of twenty twenty. To ensure that we're moving in the right, moving the needle in the right direction. So we, we felt that was, uh, clearly one of the objectives. Of, of this, of this project. The commission identified of those, uh, five focus areas, which was healthcare. Education, housing, public safety and economic opportunity for, uh, for this. External conversations and focus groups. Um, and then was very concerned with ensuring that, um, the city staff. Received the training it needed to implement, um, its programs. Um, and become a more, uh, equitable city, uh, as we implement our internal actions and activities. So you will hear from, uh, Dr. Susanna Burns Ali and Dr. Maria Altiva. Uh, from, uh, Florida International University. Uh, Dr. Dr. Ali. John, is, uh, Dr. Ali on?
Uh, I see that Dr. Ilcheva is there with the unmuted. I do not see.
Yeah, Lee is down there and she's unmuted. I think she's ready.
They're both unmuted, yes.
Thank you. Dr. Ali?
If, uh, they're unmuted and we're not just getting any sound. David, have you reviewed the, the presentation before?
Yes.
Can you hear me? This is Maria Ilcheva. I hope you can hear me. I'm not having issues. Uh, if you don't mind, we can switch while Dr. Ali, um, is, is fixing her, her. Issues with, with speaking. Uh, if you move to slide eight. So I can, I can do the presentation on the external, the community needs assessment and then we can, we can go back to, to her.
Okay.
There we go.
This, this is item nine B.
Yes. Um, so I, I want to say a few words about the, the Jorge Perez Metropolitan Center, just to give you context as to why us and, you know, what. Why are we, um, so, so glad to work with, with Boynton Beach? We are an applied social science research center, uh, with, with the goal to serve as the link between our academic resources and community organizations. between our academic resources and community organizations to work on real world problems in a in a range of public policy issues, ranging from economic development and community development, planning, housing, social equity, gender equality, all of these are some of the topics that we focus on throughout South Florida. We heard earlier from some of your staff about the importance of the census. We are actually a census designated census information center with the mission to provide local and community access to that information, training, and technical assistance on census data, specifically focusing on underserved communities. This partnership with Boynton Beach aligns with these goals, and I want to commend the commission and your staff in designing this, what we believe is a model in terms of its scope, not just in terms of data collection, but community engagement. Over the years, I can tell you have done this work with either an internal spotlight or exclusively a focus on the community, but really with this kind of three hundred and sixty degree view. Next slide, please. The internal assessment and improvements in the delivery of services, which you will hear about from Dr. Ali after me, is linked to understanding this understanding of community needs and expectations. For that end, we have designed the scope that provides the analytics the city needs to develop, as David said, the baseline evidence-based understanding of community characteristics and trajectory. These indicators will allow the city to develop a social equity index that reflects current conditions and also allows for monitoring of progress in the future. The analytics will focus on the will concentrate on the five focus areas that the commission has identified and will include both the data, that extensive data analysis that's typical of community needs assessment, with the added enhanced community engagement that will build trust and support behind any plan and action items that will come about as a result of this effort, as well as policy recommendations. These elements are not sequential, I want to emphasize that, but interlocking. Community groups in our research, we believe that they're not just the focus of the research and the sounding board, but they become partners through that enhanced engagement process. So the engagement strategy is about outreach and dissemination of information as well as including the community for consultation, collaboration, and shared leadership. We want community leaders to be champions of the transformation of the city, so we bring them in the process at all stages. Next slide, please. A few words on the data analytics. As I mentioned, they will focus on the on the five areas that you have identified that need that assessment and they need some intentional action to take place in order to build a more resilient, equitable, and inclusive community. We will look at all this data over time and across racial and ethnic groups, incorporating all the different groups in the community, including LGBTQA, senior residents, religiously marginalized communities. But we also want to emphasize that the research will recognize these identities as, including multiple intersecting factors. So when we talk about each of these groups, we will also recognize these intersections, for example, race and class, or gender and race, et cetera. This holistic analysis connects the different indicators and will ultimately speak to the barriers and opportunities for community development. We will include data for the city by neighborhood and, as I mentioned, for each of the groups that we want to focus on. You see some of the metrics that we will include, they relate to economic opportunity and mobility, educational achievement and workforce development, housing conditions and homeownership, crime and safety metrics, and health outcomes. Next slide, please. Another element in our approach is, as I mentioned, the targeted engagement strategy, which will allow us to bring the community as a participant in the research and ensure that we provide sufficient context and opportunity for all to take ownership of this effort. Community ownership, community engagement, as you know, works best when there is an ongoing process enabling relationship and trust to build and strengthen over time. The research is not only of the community but for the community, for its benefit. As a broad gauge of community perspectives, we will conduct a community survey, and I have reviewed some of your documents. I know you fairly recently you conducted the business and the resident survey only last year. Obviously, what we will do will have somewhat different lens incorporating the current context and gauging attitudes within that context. I won't go over these individually, but I want to emphasize again that these are all different layers of community engagement that provide different level and different depth in the data. When we conduct interviews, those will be targeted with community leaders, activists, maybe city staff, nonprofit organizations that provide that can provide their own perspective on on community needs and barriers of opportunity and hopefully any action items that they want for the city and the community as a whole to see in their future. Each focus area will be represented in the committee made up of individuals from identified social groups, city representatives, as I said, community organizations, and broadly members of the community who can speak on its behalf. The committees will discuss within their respective areas what they see in the community and end up with with an action plan for each respective focus area. It's important for these committees to have some guidelines and some analytics to base their work on. That's where the community needs assessment will will enmesh with their work as we feed them some of the data as current as we can possibly get, obviously incorporating trends and the various group that we want to focus on, which will allow the committees obviously to design strategies and action plus plans that address immediate needs, but also with the view of the future for creating a better community for all residents. Final slide, we can move on to it. Based on the analytics and this extensive community engagement process, we will develop a report summarizing the key findings under each policy area and detailed policy recommendations. This robust public engagement strategy coupled with evidence-based analytics will ensure that the resulting recommendations can be used to prioritize resources and align staff efforts with intended outcomes. I will end by saying that we, FIU, are a partner in this effort. We're not just a consultant. We have our Office of Engagement Representatives on in participating also virtually, our Assistant Vice President for Engagement Karen Laverne and Dr. Genesis Ramirez. Along with our research team, we view this as a long-term partnership, not a quick fix or a one-and-done project. We know communities evolve. We've been seeing that for the twenty-plus years of our existence as we monitor this evolution and help along. Communities improve both internally as well as for their residents, businesses, and other stakeholders. And the goal of our work has always been, and we'll bring that to the city of Boynton Beach as well, is to build ultimately a more resilient, inclusive, and equitable community in which residents have this sense of belonging and pride in where they live, work, and conduct their daily lives. I hope Dr. Ali is able to connect now so we can, this was my last slide, so I'll stay on, of course, for questions, but we can talk about the previous item.
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask some questions because they're two separate items.
Of course.
This is more the external aspect of what we're trying to do with the city, and then we'll allow Dr. Ali to speak. I want to thank you again for the presentation. Some of the questions that I had is in regards to the analytics. Are you also looking at the previous community outreach that we've done? I know that we've done multiple things with our town square project. There have been previous heart of Boynton studies, the twenty twenty plan. And one of my concern is is that I've heard from the community that they don't want to do another community outreach because of the fact that we always find somebody new to do the community outreach and that without them doing the initial work of what they said in the past. So I want to make sure that the analytics includes past community outreach initiatives of the city to be included.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, like when we go into a community first, we conduct very thorough analysis of what the community has done in that regard. And that was actually my first question, has Boynton Beach done any community needs assessment? I understand you've done extensive public outreach efforts, but without this baseline, we don't know where the community has been, where it is now, and where it's going. So in addition to the reports that we'll review, including a strategic plan, any outreach efforts that have been conducted over the years, we want to recognize these efforts and we want to build on them. We don't want to replicate them. We want to do better and add more value as we conduct this assessment.
All right. That's a wonderful answer. It makes me smile. The second thing is regarding the enhanced community engagement. One of my concerns is that some of our community doesn't know of the possibilities in the outside world, that they may have been isolated into a culture that does not necessarily expand their horizon. And so I want to make sure that when we deal with enhanced community engagement that we educate, that that includes the education of the different possibilities for the future.
That's an excellent point, and I can speak more on it, on how to do community engagement right, rather than just community outreach. I want to make that distinction. Very often, we're focused on just providing the community with information or just going to them and asking them questions. We take a different approach. We start with the analytics first. We need to present with the community with hard data, evidence as to what the city is doing, where the community has been, where it currently is, any challenges that we can identify with the data, and then we engage them to give us their perspective and to add to that administrative data.
Mayor, I mean, very good point, doctor. And that was one of the reasons why we reached out to a research university to help us with the facilitation of these meetings and focus groups, is because they bring that information and data to help educate those that may not know what's out there, also to focus on evidence-based policies and strategies. So you want to know what actions you can take that will get you the largest return on that investment. So that's another important approach, and that's another reason why we reached out to a research university.
No, and I'm very excited about moving forward. And then the last question is for the recommendation and action plan. Will you also help providing us with a kind of the costs associated and possible short, short-term, midterm, and long-term range goals as well with those recommendations?
The short answer is yes, that's exactly a project I just finished with Miami-Dade County and fiscal fiscal impact was one of the items that we include in the recommendations.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And so, yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a question to the presenter. First of all, thank you for your presentation. And I think the mayor's previous question may be the perfect segue to mine. I'd like to ask, you know, could you tell us about what other cities or organizations you've worked with? And can you give a more like more specific or concrete example of how you brought policy change or you brought policy recommendations based on your analysis?
I can speak about a few communities. I just mentioned one of them, the Miami-Dade Community Needs Assessment, Comprehensive Community Needs Assessment that we just finished. I have the presentation in about in a few weeks to the Community Action Agency Board. It's a hundred and seventy-page, very data-intensive report, which will be dissected in various ways with by the Community Action and Human Services Department with a look for seeking grants to enhance their services, because that was one of our main findings. Given COVID-19, and we started this project last year, but obviously, as we were writing the report, we had to adjust and pivot some of our recommendations, especially with regards to fiscal impact or the rising need in certain areas, be it food insecurity, unemployment, business expansion and development. So when we work with them, when we make these recommendations, as I mentioned, we conduct fiscal impact analysis. We conduct a resource analysis, what's out there, what are the community partnerships that can be built on in order to reduce that impact directly to Miami-Dade County? And then we work with them in designing policies or even providing them more information that they may need to seek grants to expand services. Other communities that we've worked with, Broward County, I'm mentioning only counties, but maybe I should talk about cities as well. Fort Lauderdale, we worked with them on affordable housing, needs assessment, and policy recommendations. So again, looking at what the needs are, where the opportunities are in terms of vacant land, in terms of type of development and demand for various types of housing, and based on that, the city develops plans that influences, obviously, their zoning policies, influences their comprehensive planning. All of these directly feed into their efforts to improve the community. This is what we envision for Boynton Beach as well, that we link the work that we do to your existing efforts and build on them as a way to improve the community. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, and I think maybe I hope I didn't miss it, but I'm familiar with your work in Vice Mayor, I'm familiar with their work in Miami and specifically in the Liberty City community. And they're going back and looking at, they're now in the process of reviewing what they did years ago and comparing where that community stands today with regard to some of the policies that were recommended around equity for that community. So that's another, that's an example I'm very familiar with.
Fantastic.
We're also working in your county. I didn't mention that project, but because it's still, it's still happening. We don't have a final report, but with with the Palm Beach Housing Leadership Council, some of you I know have attended their meetings where we did some of the initial presentations on on housing needs for the county and for various municipalities, including Boynton Beach. So we already working and are familiar with Palm Beach County and your community specifically.
Well, thank you. You have answered my question, and I appreciate your thorough response.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hay? Are you muted? We're not hearing you. All right, we're gonna wait to see if Colin can go back. We do have someone from the audience that would like to speak, so I'm gonna open it up to her right now, and then hopefully we can get your microphone working.
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, Commissioner Romulus, would you like to go first?
I would.
Okay.
Thanks. Just a few questions. So really, what I want to know and what I'd like to see are the deliverables. So what are the things that we expect to see at the end of this analysis of this research that we would that you would be conducting?
There will be multiple deliverables throughout the duration of the research and engagement. So the first major deliverable, which, as I said, will be concurrent with our engagement efforts, preliminary engagement, like forming groups, deciding on designing the committees, the committee membership around the five focus areas. But the first major deliverable is the analytics, that community needs assessment that's based on hard data, using Census, Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, Florida Department of Health, any and all available sources of data that covers the five. Second, well, it's not second, but additionally, as part of our community engagement, we're proposing a survey, as I mentioned, survey, focus groups, interviews. Each of these items have their own reports. So we finish the community survey, there is a report, that's one deliverable. We conduct the focus group, that will be another report. Ultimately, everything will become integrated into a six. We conduct the focus group, that will be another report. Ultimately, everything will 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 become integrated into a si- single document that pulls information and and demonstrates needs, opportunities, challenges from all these uh da- data sources, including the community engagement. Uh, and the 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 third major piece, as I said, will be a key findings and policy recommendations. So if you think about, you know, three sections with multiple subsections, one is the the administrative data analytics. Another one is the deliverable from the community engagement process, all all of these reports on proceedings, survey data, focus uh analytics, and the final piece is key findings and and recommendations.
Thank you. And so that that segues my next question. Based on those recommendations, um, you know, how do we, are you then going to give us a plan of execution and, I guess, like direct us and direct our staff, direct our city to really have s- solid tangible ways to implement these steps?
The answer is yes, because as I said, we we are looking for um for for our relationship as a partnership. So we will work with your city staff and US commissioners. We we typically do multiple presentations to to city staff and to US a commission, uh, kind of as 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 checkpoints. We come up with with a list of recommendations, we engage in discussions, we do and the the city staff to to determine feasibility and, you know, to 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 come up with the plan on how to meet uh what what we're proposing, how to make these recommendations uh impactful for for the community. Uh, so the the short answer is yes, we will assist you and and city staff come up with an action plan as a result of these recommendations.
Commissioner, uh, I would also add that this becomes part of our strategic plan. Um, some of those strategic activities or strategic initiatives become part of the strategic plan, which is reviewed and approved um and directed by this commission. Um, so you will be able to hear those uh recommendations, pri- help us prioritize those activities. And then um they become part of our action items.
That's great. You, th- thank you for reading my mind. You you beat me to my next question. Okay, and the last one is just, what's what's the timeline that we're looking at with all of these in terms of the research and the implementation and and all of that? What's the timeline? Just just rough timeline?
Well, once we secure funding for this work, we we anticipate we we will be um, we will finalize all of this within six months.
But one of the, one of the key uh um key issues um and activities that we will all uh undertake, Commissioner, is uh, we're we're, we have to identify grant funding for a lot of this work. And working with our research partner, we feel that would be uh a great benefit to to approach jointly as a partner. Uh, many of those uh entities, private and public, that do support these types of um studies and initiatives. Uh, so that's, that's why you hear the doctor say wants to grant, that wants the funding is secured, we will move forward. And we would ask the commission um in your respective um areas of expertise and and influence to help us with that. Um, and so we we're very excited about this this project and know that it is really important to our community.
I I agree, and and I'd like to talk offline about some possible funding sources. So David, if you could follow up with me so we could talk about that more.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner, hey, you're next.
Uh, I, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Okay, I just wanted to 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 ask, uh, Commissioner Romulus uh hit on a lot of the questions I was gonna ask, but uh, is there a uh a webpage for for your, you know, showing your your work or your deliverables or the your past efforts or anything like that? Is there a website?
Yes, sir. Metropolitan dot FIU dot edu.
Metropolitan.
Dot FIU dot edu.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And now we have someone at the the podium that would like to speak. Ms. Sawyer?
Yeah, thank you very much. Susan Sawyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I do think this is a fabulous idea, but um I did have some, I guess, their procedural questions. Why was FAU chosen over FAU, sorry, FIU over FAU when they are our local public university? And if we're going to be spending money, should we be keep, be keeping it within our county? And I think that's a little on the loud side. Um, do you want me to just ask all my questions?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, um, second, is this money for all this budgeted? So we're talking about this with, and hoping we'll get grants. Um, what is the cost to do this kind of survey?
One twenty-five total.
One twenty-five. Thank you very much.
Mayor.
And um, what other options have been explored that possibly cost less? Because as Vice Mayor Conserga brought up earlier when we were discussing boat fees, this is a time of financial crisis. Um, I don't think we should be taking any money out of the reserves. And, you know, I questioned the reserve situation last budget year, and, you know, I I was questioning it again this year during the budget. We need to be protecting our reserves, not spending our reserves. And I'm, this is just one more thing. And yes, it's valid, and yes, it's worthy, and yes, I think we should be doing something. But I'm questioning the cost, I'm questioning why we're sending money outside of our county and not going with FAU or some other university within our county to do this. Thank you, Alan, that sounds better. And um, you know, i- it just, my other thing would be um, this came up during the Arts Commission meeting the other night. There was a question about finding a way to integrate or allow the different subgroups within the city or whatever technical term is the right term um to know how to get involved in arts. You know, we put on the largest international kinetic art event in the world, and it's it's like, it's almost impossible to find someone of color to come get involved and do kinetic art. We reached out to our sister city in Haiti, and that artist that was prepared to come help, he is, his workshop is in such a dangerous area, he can't get there to finish the piece of art to turn it in. So we're struggling to find people. We want to diversify, but yet we can't. People just don't know that the option exists. So how are we going to get this out to our local artists, which is a huge community that brings a lot of money into our city? Because we're an art city, you know, how are we going to reach out to them? How are we going to let them know that they can make kinetic? How are we going to teach them? You know, it seems like we should be reaching out to economic units that were not mentioned, that are applicable to our city, which is, you know, heavy on the arts and heavy on the kinetic. So that would be questions that I would ask, but I would tend to ask, you know, what's going on with the money here? This is a lot of money. Whether you can get grants for it or not is another story, and I'm sure you can get quite a few grants, but um this is a lot of money to spend in a time where people don't have jobs, they've lost their funding. Are we better off spending our money helping people in need in our city and saving this until later? When the economy is turned around, and those would be questions I would ask, and thank you for your time.
So I, my my opinion on this is that, you know, whatever university in Florida, they're all part of the University of Florida's system. Um, as for the the spending of the money is that this is an investment. Correct. Some investments don't work out, some of them pay dividends. The fact is, is that if we don't spend the money, you know, how, what is the multiplier when we expand the culture and education of our community to, you know, FIU's dual enrollment program, you know, just I, to me, there it seems that, you know, we should do it as soon as possible. And, you know, I'm okay with spending the reserves because, you know, after doing the analytics and hearing from the community about, you know, the decades of the stagnation um north of Boynton Beach Boulevard, it's time that the the city actually, you know, does something for that, the, for all communities, and this is one of the ways that we can do that. So with that, I'll ask the commission if they'd like to make a motion to move forward, and we will discuss uh funding uh in the near future.
Mayor, mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Before that motion, I just wanted to touch on the topic of cost, because I do think Ms. Sawyer brings a valid point. I had a discussion with her city manager, and I don't want to speak for her. Um, but from my understanding, you know, this is a situation where we pay as we go, as some people say. So this is not a one-time lump sum expense. Uh, we pay as we go, and so this will be a graduated expense, and we may not spend that entire amount. Um, and but I'd like to ask Lori, if Lori, if you could clarify that, because I I don't want to speak for you.
May I, may, I'm sorry, city manager, or mayor, just to cl- clarify. Um, com- uh Vice Mayor, this portion, um, there's twenty thousand dollars in the economic development budget that's dedicated towards this external. So the remainder is the gap that's going to be funded by grants. So specifically for this project, there's a twenty thousand dollars out of economic development.
We did speak about that before.
And and the grant, uh, the grant request is to close that gap. For the internal, that's a different, that's the conversation where it's going to start and then determine uh what that assessment looks like, and then uh the budget will develop as it goes forward. So I just wanted to provide that clarification. So the response to Susan's um comment, this is twenty thousand dollars for this piece that was already in the economic development budget. Uh, but the gap grants are going to close, uh, the approach, the grant approach is intended to close that financial gap. So we're not putting adding any extreme hardship or burden upon the city budget for 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 this project. Just wanted to clarify that. Uh, th- thank you.
And Vice Mayor, to just, and to continue on what David said, and on the internal assessment, we are able to identify some funding in this year's budget. I have some other contractual services funding that was not utilized that we want to identify to go ahead and put toward to get the, you know, everything's broken down by task and by phases. So it's built to be able to do it. I hate to say pay as you go, it sounds so cheesy, but literally, you know, they're not going to go out and do a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work, and then I have to go, oh, okay, where am I going to come with the money? So um, we've talked about that exhaustively. Uh, there's no intention at this point to utilize reserves. That can be a discussion in the future if the commission decides possibly to do that. That's not the intent at this time. Um, we have enough to get us going. So what Commissioner Romulus asked about the six months, it's unlikely this will conclude in six months because we need to um continue to identify the funding sources. If we get them immediately, we're on, we're on a roll. So we're asking overall for the uh conceptual a- approval to move forward with this initiative, and then then we need to work and continue to talk as we identify potential funding and how we can pay, pay for this as we move forward. So I'm not writing a check tomorrow for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Can't do it, so.
Go do it, clarify that.
Yeah.
That being said, uh, motion to move forward.
Thank you. Second. Saying no further discussion, all those in favor? Yes.
Just want to add in there, I do know it is the responsibility of the applicant or or the individuals to search for funding, but I also believe that the onus falls on us as well, especially if we're making this commitment. So I'd like to request that we have um Debbie Majors and whoever else is, you know, usually in charge of funding grants and funding for for things like this to kind of jump on this project as well to help us bring funding in sooner than later to make sure that this project gets done, because I don't want this to be something that years from now, we're still trying to maybe figure it out, or 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 we're we're not moving the ball as quickly as we would like. Um, you know, the the majority of us who are here will be termed out soon, and I would like to make sure that we have implementation of uh with these items um e- executed and implemented uh prior to us getting off of this commission, so that's actually something that continues as a legacy once we're gone. So that's my request.
Commissioner, we need your help as a commission, no doubt about it. I think this is a, we're probably one of the few, if only, cities at this point doing this. And I think it's something to go out and talk about, and I think there will be support uh to get some funding.
All right. Saying no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to move forward with resolution number twenty dash one zero five. All those in favor states out by saying aye.
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 All those oppose? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Dr. Ali, um, are you there?
I am, and thank you for your patience with my technical difficulties, and thank you uh, to Dr. Elizabeth for uh stepping in.
My apologies.
So I think first I want to, I want to commend the city of Boynton Beach for not just looking for a symbolic answer to these deep-rooted issues, but really going for a comprehensive plan that takes a deep dive um that not only looks at what are the initial policies, but how to implement effectively and how to make sure that the changes that you make are institutionalized. The worst-case scenario is a bunch of paper policies that don't end up going anywhere. And um, talking with your team has been just just a wonderful experience that we are at FIU very excited about this project. Uh, we really feel like it matches the FIU's our mission, our goals, and who we are. So the research team that we've pulled together is from across the university um with a lot of emphasis on the Metropolitan Center and on the Department of Public Policy and Administration. And it focuses on our individual research interests as uh participants and as the research team, but also is consistent with the university's longstanding support of a diverse student body and a diverse community. So this is a natural extension of our strengths as a university and as a minority-majority university as well. So Maria's done a beautiful job of going through the full plan, and it really works nicely to have the big-picture external overview before we go down into the internal piece. And I believe uh the internal piece starts on, we'll go to slide six that says phase one. Possible. Great. Um, so what we're doing is we're saying there's this broad set of policies that we're going to give you an evaluation on and really give you proposals and set you up for the big-picture external piece, but without having the internal structures adapted and designed to really implement those policies, there's that risk of things falling to the wayside. So we've thought through a two-stage or two-phase approach. And the first is to look at your organization as a whole and look at the policies you have, do national benchmarking, and come up with policy recommendations and action plans for the city as a whole of the internal components. And then to take what we've learned there and develop a really strong training uh session that will give universal training on these issues to all city employees. How that'll work is that we'll have a asynchronous component. So that's like an online module, little online pieces that the employees would go through and then bring together smaller groups that can really do a deep dive into the issues together. So it's that hybrid of in-person and asynchronous learning um in smaller groups. So each session we would have would have uh you know, thirty to forty, say, employees, so that would be twenty to twenty-five face-to-face sessions. If we then go to the next slide for the second phase, at this point, we go deeper into the individual departments. So you can imagine that there's a set of policies that go for everyone, but the needs of your HR department are going to be different than your needs of your procurement people. So that's going into the department specifics and doing that same national benchmarking, policy recommendations, and action plans, but applying it in those very narrow areas. We'll then take the information from that and develop trainings that are specialized to each department. And again, hold those same sorts of trainings that are partially asynchronous and partially in-person. Throughout it all, uh, what we're working with with another office in FIU is to create some micro credentials that can, people can use on their LinkedIn accounts, on on all different sorts of uh professional development factors to really highlight what they've learned, what they've accomplished, so that there's an individual incentive for employees as well as an incentive for the city of Boynton Beach. so that there's an individual incentive for employees as well as an incentive for the city of Boynton Beach. So hopefully by pairing this internal approach with all of the amazing things that are going to come out of that external project, you can really have a start to finish comprehensive approach and serve as a model city and really a leader, not only in the area, but more broadly, we see this as something that the city of Boynton Beach can really be proud of moving forward. Very few cities across the country are taking a comprehensive approach. Instead, they tend to be more piecemeal. So we'll do a little of this or a little of that. But those piecemeal approaches just come with a layer of risk. So I, I think that this is just an extraordinary opportunity and I thank you for considering this proposal.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ali. You know, the, the whole thing that we had happen to our city is that we feel that there was a lack of education with some of our city directors and employees. And the, the point where, you know, I had an experience with the Racial Equity Institute to take a 16-hour course to do a deep delve into the history of this country. And that's kind of one of my concerns is, is that it's the, the training aspect. So that, you know, it's not just what needs to change, it's how it got this, you know, this point in our society to begin with. And I think that's kind of where I'm hoping that this is something that you are, you're looking into when you're, you're talking about the training and doing the, the history of where we came with the society where, you know, yeah, after the Civil War, we had, you know, everyone had the right to vote with the 15th, all men had the right to vote with the 15th Amendment and how slowly but surely that was taken away in, in certain parts of this country. And so that's kind of my concern is that we give an understanding and a basis to the, this diversity and equity training so that our city has staff and employees knows what to do and can better understand the, the public. Because, you know, we don't know what it's like to live in someone else's shoes.
Yeah, I, I think that I'm so glad to hear you say that. The HR training that I don't ever want to do is that surface one where you're forced to go by your boss and you sit there for a day and then you just, you leave and you don't, there's no fundamental change. So I think what we really want to do is, is create a climate of understanding for all different historically disadvantaged groups and understand how we can really work together better, be more sensitive to the experiences of others. And in the end, not just learn about these issues and also the historical context that you discussed, but also have, be able to communicate better with coworkers.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes, City, Lori?
Final comment, Mayor, and if I, I, were I, you know, looking into the future here in the next year or two, I, I see us and something we've wanted to do and we've been talking about it. And I think this has created a new priority for us to, to really make it happen is develop, you know, through our human resources is an Office of Organizational Brilliance, organizational development, to have someone that focuses on internal continual, internal improvement and development for our city. That's one thing, and it takes time to, to really do a lot of these things that right now everybody's plate is full. But I, I see us, you know, to carry this forward and make real change, we're going to probably need to do that. And you'll be, you'll be seeing some requests from me, I'm sure, in the, in the near future and a future budget to get it done correctly.
Any other questions from the City Commission? If not, may have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor states so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, City Boynton Beach.
Thank you.
Our next item is, yes.
Mayor, this is Catherine Montos, Assistant City Manager. I just want to acknowledge Karen Lavernea, she's the Assistant Vice President for Engagement at FIU, and she is kind of the, the behind the scenes person liaison with the university that has made all of these connections happen with the, picking the right people at FIU. And, and she's really been kind of the nexus here. So I just wanted to acknowledge her and, and to thank her for her efforts on this initiative.
And I do see that Annette Gray has her hand raised. And so Annette, did you have any comments?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we understand that part of diversity is multicultural generational workforce and that the millennia generation and the Z generation will be replacing the boomer generation in workforce and as consumers here in the next 10 years. Having been in David's shoes and a couple of your staff's shoes, I understand for community sheriffs, it's very difficult to get out the folks to participate who are not the usual suspects. But I think in this particular instance, we should make extreme efforts to reach out to the younger community. We have to remember this transition, not only in the community stakeholders that we serve from the voting population, but as there will be future business owners and future employees of this city going forward. We simply cannot have this be a players as usual, community participation, whatever it takes. And I'm certainly that the staff and the doctors from FIU understands this and will make sure this, this happens. We are building the future culture, generation workforce culture for this population. So their voice is imperative in this study.
Yes, and I, I thank you, you know, it's, it's interesting you say that to the city of Boynton Beach with 440 on the, the City Commission. So, you know, we, we are well aware that, you know, we are moving forward with our society. And we're glad that, you know, we had the opportunity by the residents here to take the lead of our city into, further into the 21st century.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. All right. Is there any further comments regarding the, the past two resolutions? If not, we will move on to new business, item A. Discuss commission interest and authorize online participation in the National League of Cities City Summit on November 18th to the 21st, 2020. The reason why I requested that this be on is that I know that we, it's not necessarily the travel budget that we, we had planned, but it's something that I'd like to attend as in years past. In addition, you know, where, where we have more people attending, there is a discount, and I think it is, you know, because of the way it is, I would hopefully that we can have some staff attend as well if the city manager allows and they clear up the schedule a little bit. I know we're doing, we're asking a lot. And so I just want to mention this, you know, as of last year, I will be preparing a, a presentation of the things that I learned and hopefully can make recommendations and suggestions that the City Commission follows through with. You know, I remember last year I, I talked about the Community Action Agency through Palm Beach County, and I don't know if, where we've gotten there, but hopefully we, we can, you know, follow through with some of the things that we, we like to do to help better our city. So I'll ask the City Commission if there's anyone else that would like to attend. Mayor, count me in. All right.
Count me in, it's online, right?
Yep, sitting in front of a screen for a while.
Yep, count me in.
All right, excellent. And we'll go from there. And because it's, there's no travel budget, I don't think we need a motion. I'm getting a head shake, so.
Sorry, Mayor, I couldn't find my mute. No, that's fine, that's no travel related expenses. And I'll, I'll send an email out with information on the summit to everybody. And if we can get a group together, you may have a group discount available.
Yeah, I think we need five for the, the group discount. All right. Next, we're moving on to legal. Jim, should we have this discussion?
Mayor, I'm requesting that this item stay on the table for one more meeting. If you look further on your future agenda, it's going to come up October the 6th in conjunction with the JKM report.
Okay. Sounds good. And then our last item is the discussion in direction by City Commission regarding the letter of intent from Mallorca Isles, LLC regarding the Nichols Boulevard properties. Are they still here? No.
Yep, yes, Mayor, they are, I can unmute them.
Mr. Maxi, Andrew Maxi, I believe is the.
No, it's.
Can, can you guys hear me?
Sorry, that's Pulte, I'm sorry, looking at the wrong letter, I'm trying to find the names in our attendee list.
Yes, I can hear someone.
Yes, this is Michelle Rope with Centennial Management. I know that Elizabeth and Louis are listening as well. Do you see them? Are you able to unmute them?
I do not see them.
Well, I can definitely take charge of them.
Okay.
Everyone pray.
Do you mind pulling up their letter of intent? And if you, you'd like to begin your presentation?
Yeah, well, we came upon this property and we're under the impression that you guys are in a contract that you can get out of. This contract is for 2.275 million and Centennial Management wants to offer almost a million dollars more at 3.185. Essentially, it would, it would mimic what Pulte, Pulte is doing. We would just be providing more money. We understand that there's deed restrictions and some entitlements. And we've gone through their contract and just really believe that, you know, they're getting it for a very cheap price. And we believe that the 3.185 is more fair. Excuse me, my dog.
Not the first one on the meeting today.
And the, the extra money is not just, you know, for show and tell or anything. It's, it's, we love Boynton Beach, we want to give you guys what that property is worth. And we want to be able to keep beautifying the, the land and the areas, you know, we have Ocean Breeze, we have Wells Landing, and we want to keep growing there.
Yeah. So, and so I think one of the, the concerns is any costs to the city that we would have to.
And.
And so is that included in the letter of intent as well?
It was not included in the letter of intent, however, let me verbally say it now. We'd be happy to consume up to $100,000 of the, I think they call it the buyer's cost. So whatever they have already spent and you guys would owe, we would reimburse that. And we're happy to put that in the contract as well.
And so.
There were, sorry.
And so it's, it's something that, you know, we don't normally like to, to go back on a contract once it's signed. And so however, the, the 900,000 reasons, you know, kind of makes sense, especially, you know, you know, the, this is kind of where, you know, sometimes we go to RFP and this is why a letter of intent is not necessarily the best option moving forward. And but, you know, it kind of leads us to the point of allowing Pulte to make another offer or hearing from the, the thoughts and sentiments of the commission. So I'll ask the commission, do you want to make your own judgments? Or do we have someone from Pulte here that would also like to provide a counter argument?
Mayor, there are representatives of Pulte online, and I do believe they asked to speak. I am, they're all self-muted right now, but yes. Andrew Maxi is with Pulte and he is self-muted, but Andrew, if you'll unmute yourself, I guess Mayor will allow you to.
Yep, and Michelle, I just muted you as well to allow Pulte to speak.
Hi, good evening, this is Andrew Maxi with Pulte Home Company. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say that, you know, Pulte, you know, like Centennial Management has a strong interest in this property. We've had a strong interest in the property for well over a year. You know, we've committed a fair amount of, you know, time and money to investigating the property. There's obviously some challenges with the property as I outlined in my letter. You, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners, there's deed restrictions, there's a large amount of vegetation on the property, which is going to require a fair amount of mitigation, both in payments and off-site relocations. And then finally, there's a fair amount of utility servicing that's going to be required from Old Boynton Boulevard, Old Boynton Beach Boulevard up to the site. So we've spent a lot of time quantifying these costs. And the purchase price behind this letter of intent that was negotiated almost a year ago, we arrived at very carefully. We do not intend on building any type of workforce, you know, deed restricted units here, but we do think that it's going to be an affordable product when you look at the, you know, mean new home sale price for Palm Beach County. You know, we think single-family homes in the mid to 300s is appropriate here. So that's reflected in the purchase price. We would be open to, you know, countering with maybe reducing the number of units and then adding an incentive for every unit that we get approved, approved over a certain threshold. That would allow the city to share in some upside in the event that we were able to maybe get some higher densities on the site. We think that the density is going to be pretty low, given some of the site constraints, but that would at least allow both parties to enjoy, you know, that upside. So we're happy to come back with that counter proposal. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, we arrived at this very carefully and like Centennial Management Group have, you know, a very high level of respect for Boynton. We're entertaining some offers that, you know, your local CRA has to offer as well. And we're excited to be a part of this community and respect the relationship we have with the staff and you working with us, you know, for a very long period of time at this point. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You know, the, the whole thing is that, you know, the, I understand what you were saying around regarding the upside at 91 properties, if there was more properties to be put on the land, you would be increasing your, your price. The, the issue is, is that any sort of value of the homes does not necessarily affect the city of Boynton Beach. And the, the conversations that we've had is that we are looking for workforce housing or subsidized housing because that is what the, the community is, is lacking. Whereas if someone who's looking for a home in the $300,000 range, they, they have multiple opportunities in the city of Boynton Beach to purchase one for less and then to rehab it or modify it. So, you know, I can't, you know, argue with someone that's offering us that much more money. And so that's, that's, that's my position, and I'll wait to, to hear from the, the City Commission. Mayor? Do we have anybody from, besides Michelle? Not that I'm aware of. Okay. So I, I do have a question for staff. Should we accept this letter of intent? You know, is the procedure similar to the CRA where there is a, you know, there is a period where we can still accept other or entertain other letters of intent?
Jim, I'm going to ask you to answer that.
Yeah, and it might.
We get a counter proposal three weeks from now. What would happen then?
Well, the same thing that's happening now, let me go back a step and, and talk about the Pulte transaction. That started with a letter of intent and worked its way to a purchase and sale agreement, which the City Commission approved at a City Commission meeting a few meetings ago. But the contract has not been signed. The contract does provide that it doesn't take effect until it's signed, so. So in a sense, it's, it's still an open issue. So in the same manner that tonight you're taking up an intervening notice of intent, there would be nothing that would stop you from considering additional notices of intent. If other people hear about the transaction and want to, you know, jump into the game and, you know, get into a bidding war with each other, for lack of a better term. Unless the commission sets a different process for trying to figure out what to do with this property, which is to step back away from both the purchase and sale agreement and the two interested parties that have given you notices of intent and put the property out there on the marketplace and see what kind of responses you get. I'll say this, the Pulte contract that has not been signed has many conditions in it. The property is not in the city. It's governed by county regulations. And therefore, there are contingencies about what can be built and how much can be built. So there's still some risk associated to, for any developer that moves forward on it. So the, the ball's really in the commission's court to try to decide what they want to do. We are holding some money from Pulte. They gave us a good faith, $10,000 deposit. There'd be, have to be some discussion about whether reversing the city's position on this would entitle them to that money back or whether they have forfeited it. But, you know, in fairness to what the comments were made by Pulte, you know, they, they have worked with the city in good faith. And, you know, they got a property that you were interested in selling. They were interested in buying and reached in the agreement, albeit not yet signed and therefore not yet enforceable.
Mayor, I'll just make one final comment in the meantime. From what I gather, you know, one proposal, one letter here of intent is nearly a million dollars more. And that's, that is substantial. And we could do a lot with that. And so, you know, right now I'm leaning towards accepting this letter of intent simply for that reason. It, it seems like it's, actually, I should say, it seems very clear that it's the better deal of the two. Unless there's some counter proposal, of course, that exceeds that.
And so it's, the, you know, the issue that the, the City Commission has is that we can reject both offers and put it out for RFP. The issue is, is that we, we don't control what gets built there. We don't get control how many units get there. This is not our destiny to control what happens with the property. This is more of the, the county, the Palm Beach County Commissioner's decision. But, you know, we've heard rhetoric from them and everyone is looking for more subsidized housing within Palm Beach County. And that's kind of where my, my leaning is towards Mallorca, is that they have shown commitment for the subsidized housing and to help all communities. And whether this is rental or homeownership, that's, you know, that's up to, to them. However, I feel that we will, you know, we can be better off with the, the money in hand and then the, the possibility of having, you know, whatever the, the county decides, move forward. But I know that Pulte isn't looking to, to, you know, find the subsidized homes that are possible with Mallorca Isles. Unless I'm mistaken.
Right, Mayor, like I'm, I'm looking through the letter of, or letter of intent. I don't see anything that's written that says that they're planning on building affordable or workforce housing. Where are you getting that or hearing that?
I, I'm not. I'm just saying the, the past experience with Centennial Management.
Well, that's past experience. That says nothing of this experience. So are they willing to say that? Or are they going to put that in writing? What guarantee do we have that they said this is what, what they want to do with this property? Especially if they're going to pay 3.1 million dollars. That, that was a whole different story with other properties they've bought from us in the past, where we've either given it to them or they were, they were subsidized through the state.
Mayor, would it be possible if Michelle or some other member of Centennial could speak to that? Because that is an important point.
So yeah, so what I'll do is I'll allow Michelle to speak from Centennial and I'll allow Alexander to make final comments each. And then hopefully the City Commission will move forward with a vote. So Michelle?
Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I don't believe we had in our plan one or the other. I think that is definitely a discussion point. If that's something that, you know, helps push it towards our way, then, then we'd love to talk more about it. I wish, I really do wish Elizabeth and Louis were able to join. They're having trouble for whatever reason. And he could say yes or no right up. But all I can say is we're open to every idea and that we love the property. We, I don't, we offered more money because we thought it was worth more money. And that's, that's pretty much all I got in front of me right now. I know that, that we did really want a contract similar to Pulte's in regards to, like the sewer services and the, the utility service agreements, the period of time to make sure that we can get all the deed restrictions and entitlements off. At this point, all, all the, the only difference is the money. And I, I can't promise the affordable housing part.
Mayor?
Yes.
Have a question for our city attorney.
Yeah.
Jim, can we dictate anything on this property in terms of what kind of housing we would like to be built on it in, in, in exchange for the sale?
Well, just as I said earlier, the property is in Palm Beach County. So we have very little control, you know, over the process of the approval of what gets built there. I, I do have a suggestion for you, having, you know, listened to what both of the representatives have said. And, and part of it is a fairness issue as well. You know, we've been, in a sense, we've gotten to the altar with Pulte. And a little unusual to, you know, suddenly call off the marriage at that particular point. Perhaps you would table this matter? Let Pulte consider the comments that they're, they're probably hearing for the first time from the City Commission tonight with the backdrop of the new NOI that's been offered to you. And let us talk to the Pulte representatives as we have in the past and get back to you with an update at the next commission meeting.
Mayor, I'm happy to entertain that because that's really where I stand. I, I'm, I'm happy to see that we can get a potential extra million dollars for this property. But in, in fairness to the whole marriage example, it just feels, it just feels wrong to kind of pull out the last minute. So I, I'd like to see if there's something else that we can maybe renegotiate. And if that's the case, then I would be willing to continue this arrangement. I'm sorry, the puns, I just can't help it. Anyway, so I would be happy to continue this, entertain this arrangement if we can come to some type of agreeable, you know, whatever.
I, I should say that my analogy was not based on any personal experience like that. Heard about, I have heard about ceremonies like that where the groom, usually the groom doesn't show up.
All right. And so.
Am I still muted? Oh, I'm not. Well, I just, sorry. Thank you guys for your time, no matter what. I appreciate you guys even giving me the chance to bring this forward to you guys. So thank you, and, and we definitely look forward to all of our business in the future.
So the, the option, so if we get a second, we can table this to the next meeting. And then I would encourage both developers to reach out to the City Commission to, to get their perspective so that we have a better understanding what the commission wants to, and how to move forward at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And so what I wanted to see if we could get, City Mayor, Lori?
We're, we're looking at October 6th, Mayor, correct? Not the September 22nd? Because that is a, that's the budget, our budget hearings, do you, which do you want to put it on? You, you can do either.
I'll ask the, the City Commission, as we set it to the next city meeting, which is actually the 22nd, not October 6th.
I, I think the question for that is, when is the Pulte agreement due to be signed? Was there a deadline on that?
There was no deadline on it.
Okay, well then, I'm in.
October, October 6th.
Okay.
That's probably better, but that, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And yes, so, so the discussion that I wanted to have with the, the City Commission is that after speaking with Palm Beach State College, after, you know, looking and speaking with Keith O'Donnell from Avaston and Young, you know, the, the City Commission has, or the CRA Board has currently approved, you know, over 1,000 residential units in the, between Ocean Avenue and Boynton Beach Boulevard and maybe 50 to 100,000 square feet of commercial space. And so my whole goal is to see if the City Commission is willing to discuss and consider working with the different property owners. I've reached out to Art Del Maida, I've reached out to Davis Camelier through Bonnie Miskel so that we may be able to join those vacant properties to discuss a commercial use or a higher education use rather than more residential. You know, it's kind of in the sense of we're having a lot of different people coming to live here, but we don't, haven't necessarily created new places for them to work. I know that the discussion we may have with all the different big box retailer stores, if we change the zoning on those to allow for other types of uses because they don't need 30,000 square feet to sell clothes. And I think that's also another discussion that I'd like to have. But it's, it's kind of like, I'd like to have a discussion with the, the City Commission about Boynton, the, the future of Boynton Beach post-COVID. And what does that mean for our economy? And that's it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just a clarification real quick. Does, does this plan include our town square and the properties currently not, not coming out of the ground? That JKM has recently indicated they fully intend to build pursuant to the existing contract. Is, is this about the other properties to the east of Town Square? Or does this include Town Square?
What would you like?
I mean, I, I would be open to a discussion east of Town Square. My, my concerns, and I do, I, I'll say I appreciate and respect your, your efforts here to, to, to find something innovative. So I'll say that first and foremost. My concerns with incorporating anything in Town Square is one. If I was inclined to change anything about Town Square, it would only be if we were given back our property from JKM. I, I am in no desirous position to renegotiate an inch of that property to do something different. So that, so that's my concern there. If they give us this land back tomorrow and we, we sever all that and clean ourselves up, I would be open to a broader discussion. But right now, as it stands, the latest communication from JKM is full steam ahead. They claim they're going to meet the timelines and meet the contractual obligations. So if, if you could contain your, your discussion to properties east of Town Square, I, I would not object to a, a conversation about looking into it. I, I do have concerns about investing in physical education space at a time when I've, I've spent the last six months engulfed in virtual education space and, and got a, what I think is an inside look at the future of education. So I don't know if square footage is the future of, of education, especially higher education. But I'll stop talking if, if the discussion is entirely excluding Town Square-related activity. I have no problem having it.
Okay, and that, that's kind of where I want, I want to have the discussion. I was going to bring up possibly bifurcating it, the Town Square, but I'd rather have the conversation regarding the, the future of our downtown, if that's what makes you happy.
Yeah, just personally, if it, if it has nothing to do with the plan that, that is supposed to be going forward with Town Square, you know, I'm open to it.
Okay, and so I asked the, the City Commission, you know, is it only non-Town Square properties? Or do we want to try to see if there is a bifurcation of Town Square? Where we have the north, south, and mid properties?
Mayor, I, I, there is no way to have this conversation while what's still us on the ground exists. I don't think you can, that's what I was saying earlier. It, it, there's, this line of conversation doesn't compute with what's currently going on right now with JKM. So I'm happy to enter the conversation outside of Town Square. But within it, we have to wrap up what's going on right now on the ground first. There's no way to have this conversation with that still going on. That's my personal opinion, so I, I, I stand there.
All right, and so I'll go forward. And if we have someone, Vice Mayor or Commissioner, hey?
I'm on, I'm on the same page as what has already been said. I mean, from the letter that we received from Ms. Miskel, they are on track and they're committed to finishing. I don't want to interfere with that.
Okay.
I agree totally that we don't interfere with them. Let, let, let JKM do what they're going to do, which is interesting, and we'll see where it goes.
All right. Thank you so much. So Lori? The, the conversation for a future agenda, most likely, I think, after the CRA meeting, so October 20th. And.
Mayor?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll say, and so I had plans to go out of town the second half of October. I, I worry every day that the COVID school district situation has potentially taken that off the table. But as it stands right now, I, I do not anticipate being here the second City Commission meeting in October. That's just me.
All right, and I, I do want you to be a part of the conversation. So, you know, would you want to have it on October 6th or the beginning of November?
Preferably November, just because staff might want some time to, to delve in as well.
Okay, and then, and then the, the second aspect of it is the discussion of the, the big box retailers possibly expanding the, the zoning matrix for C3 for certain properties over 15,000 square feet.
I have no problem with that conversation.
All right, thank you so much. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all right. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. John, do you mind giving us a closeout?
I was about to say.
Or, Connor, Yuri, you got something to read? Yeah, do you have a microphone with you?
Got to go to closing.
Okay, so you can hear me now, all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As a reminder, a recorded version of this session will be posted to the city of Boynton Beach's YouTube channel. Links to that channel are available on the city of Boynton Beach's website at boynton-beach.org. This concludes today's meeting. On behalf of Mayor Grant and all of our elected officials, the city manager and city staff, thank you for attending today's city of Boynton Beach commission meeting. Be safe and have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.